is now streaming live, so I'm going to call to order our meeting of the city of Crescent City, City Council for April twentieth, two thousand twenty. And I will ask our clerk if she would please call the roll.
Councilmember Greeno.
Here.
Councilmember Foman.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kime.
Here.
And Mayor Inscore.
I am here and Councilmember Greeno is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. He's got a flag there and so if you would, you'd all join for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Thank you. Do we have anything to report out of closed session this evening, Council?
No actions to report this evening.
Thank you. We're going to enter into a period of public comment. Any member of the public can comment on anything is when it's within our jurisdiction. However, we're not going to be able to undertake extended discussion or act on any non-agendized items. Just a reminder for the public is if you are joining with us via Zoom, I would ask you to raise your hand. There's a raise your hand button and then that will allow us to identify that you have a public comment you would like to make, or there is an option of being able to email us at publiccomment@crescentcity.org. I do want to point out that we will not take public comment or respond via the chat feature. That is not how we have identified the process of public comment and we need to be consistent with all of our participants. So if we have any public comment tonight, I am looking down the list of our panelists and our attendees. If you have general public comment, you'll also be able to speak on any agendized item when it comes. Is there any public comment from those who are joining us this evening? I don't see any hands up. Did we get any emails? No. Okay, any of our panelists have anything other than our council members? All right, then I'm going to close our general public comment period and our first item this evening is a ceremonial item. And, and so I, I know Chief Griffin is here with us and so we have an oath of office for our police officer, Daniel Sanders. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Back again, very proud to present another officer for you. Daniel Sanders is joining us from, he was recently working with the Donner County Sheriff's Office. Worked there as a correctional officer and then a patrol deputy. Mr. Sanders started out his career way back in about two thousand one-ish, two thousand two, he said, as a police service aide. Working at the Albert Corky Police Department, right out of high school. From there, he went over and joined the Coast Guard. He spent five years working in the Coast Guard as a maritime enforcement specialist. Those are the guys that jump on the narco stubs out in the middle of the ocean and help protect our borders that way. So he worked advanced interdiction team specialized in counter narcotics. He was also able to work law enforcement operations following Hurricane Ike and also the Deepwater Horizon oil spill. During that time, he was also assigned to President Obama's first inaugural inauguration. He does have a bachelor's degree and he studied international relations with a concentration in NATO, Russia affairs and Eastern Europe. To which he's also fluent in Russian and Ukrainian, more so are Ukrainian, he tells me. He taught English in Ukraine while living there for a couple of years. And he's just very excited to come over and join the Crescent City Police Department family. So I will turn it over to Robin and I'll turn the camera around. Yep.
Hi Officer Sanders. If you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Daniel Sanders.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true and faithful allegiance.
That I will bear true and faithful allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
For the Crescent City Police Department.
For the Crescent City Police Department.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do that, go sanitize. Did Officer Sanders want to say anything, Chief?
Right, I forgot about that one. I was too worried about.
Thought I'd ask.
Oh, sorry. This Zoom thing is strange. I'm a cop, so I like to talk to people face to face usually. I'm pretty sure I probably look better in real life than on the camera. But I guess I'll say my experience with law enforcement actually started here in this building twenty years ago as a police explorer with the Crescent City Police Department. So I think it's very appropriate that that's the uniform and the badge I'm wearing today. I grew up here, so this community is very much a part of who I am. And I'm really proud today to be able to become a part of what this community is. So I've been to offer this opportunity.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Excellent. I just want to say as City Manager too, I'm very pleased to have Daniel be a part of our team. He has a wealth of knowledge, obviously, as, as we've heard from our chief. And he's just going to be a wonderful addition to an already strong team. And so Daniel, welcome aboard and look forward to having you a part of this group and out there representing our city.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, um, we are, we are going to make some adjustments to our agenda based on, on when Dr. Raywald is able to join us. He's not here with us yet. And we know that that's a really important part of, of the discussion that we are going to have later on in our meeting when it comes to new business. So with Council's approval, we're going to make our way through the agenda. And then when Dr. Raywald arrives, we will allow him to give his presentation. And then we will go to item number thirteen, so we're going to work around everything else. And when he gets here, we will, in appreciation for his time, we'll finish out whatever item we're on. And then, and then take his presentation. Is that, is that okay with everyone?
Okay.
I see nods.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, with that in mind, then we are going to move to consent. And on consent tonight, we have the council meeting minutes from March fifth and March sixteenth. That was a special meeting and then a regular meeting, the warrant claims list from March twenty eighth through April tenth. The payroll report, April eleventh paid April seventeenth, the budget to actual financial report for March two thousand twenty. The budget amendment for additional information techn- technology. And the resolution that associated with that, two thousand twenty dash twenty-nine. Insurance requirements for mobile vendors and the resolution two thousand twenty dash twenty-eight. The budget amendment for additional economic development to support and the resolution that went with that, two thousand twenty dash thirty. The multi-unit housing smoking ordinance ad hoc committee in which I appointed Mayor Pro Tim Kime and Councilmember Wright to serve on that. And then letters support of, of letters that our JPA, the Solid Waste Management Authority have sent regarding AB twenty-six twelve and SB eleven ninety-one. Both these letters are addressing the concerns of SP, SB thirteen eighty-three regarding organic waste. And this is some ways to adjust and deal with the impacts that it's having on rural communities in, in particular. Any public comment on anything that is on consent? Again, attendees who are visiting with us or joining us via Zoom. If you would hit the raise hand button, I would identify you. I don't see any, any emails that, that identified anything under close, I mean, our consent. Very good. I'll close consent, the, the public comment on consent and bring it back to the council looking for a motion.
Motion to adopt consent calendar.
I have a motion from Councilmember Foman. Do I have a second?
A second that.
A second from Pro Tim Kime. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, Councilmember Greeno.
Yes.
Councilmember Foman.
Yes.
Councilmember Wright.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kime.
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes. Very good. We were going to move then to item number twelve on the agenda. It's small wireless facilities ordinance adoption. So we're going to open up this public hearing and I will turn it over to staff, Mr. Olson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm, I'll just briefly cover the, the large elements that are included in the proposed small wireless facilities. Last week I ran, or last time we met, we went through a PowerPoint kind of showing what these facilities might look like. Basically, staff is recommending that the cell sites be co-located on existing streetlights or on new streetlights that are intended to look like streetlights adjacent to the proposed location. The small cell facilities will require stealth elements or camouflaging to try to minimize the visual impacts. The majority of the equipment should be underground wherever possible. Spacing of the small facilities, we're asking them, requiring them to be no closer than one hundred and fifty feet. And then that the small cell permits would be approved at the staff level, not require any additional oversight. But that appeals would go through Planning Commission or City Council. Will be generating a little bit of revenue on this, but it's mostly that there will be covering the cost of staff time essentially to review the permit and issue those things. Two hundred and seventy dollars per year per location. And then with an annual CPI escalation. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
How much staff time, how much staff time do you think it'll take to just renew it?
It, it should not be much to renew these on an annual basis. Once they've gone through the initial review process and have been accepted.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I don't see any, then. We're looking at, at the adoption of this, so I'll open up for any public comment regarding the small wireless facilities ordinance adoption. I do not see any hands up from our attendees. Any emails? Very good, then I'll bring it, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for consideration of ordinance eight twenty-one.
Move to a waveful reading and read by title only and adopt ordinance eight twenty-one and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, amending Title Twelve Streets, Sidewalks and Public Places of the Crescent City Municipal Code by app, adding chapter twelve point four four, Small Wireless Facilities.
I have a motion by Councilmember Foman. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Greeno. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Greeno.
Yes.
Councilmember Foman.
Yes.
Councilmember Wright.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kime.
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes. Very good.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing Robin.
You know what? And I'm deliberately being a little quiet, so I'll be loud.
Oh, okay.
I only did it because I figured it'd be echoing in this office.
Okay, sorry.
No worries.
Very good. We are, I'm looking for attendees. Did, did Dr. Raywald get an invite as a panelist or as an attendee?
He received an invite as a, as a panelist, but as with the Zoom meetings, I would, I would pay attention to both.
Here yet. So we are going to move on then to item number fourteen. RFP for the purchase and development of two vacant city-owned properties adjacent to Second and C Streets. Mr. Ware, are you taking this?
I'm, I'll, I'll be taking this one, Mayor.
All right.
All right. So yes, thank you, Mayor Inscore, members of the council. So the two properties that we're talking about were originally owned by the South Brothers. The South Brothers had a, have a, have a thriving forest product transportation business between nineteen forty-nine and nineteen sixty-two in this area. They were really utilized, the tugs and barges and whatnot to transport the lumber facilities from here. They were based basically out of the, the B Street Pier type areas where they did a lot of their business. Between those years of nineteen forty-nine and nineteen sixty-two, they transported over five hundred million board feet of, of lumber. In two thousand thirteen, the South Brother family donated the two lots that we're talking about to the city. And let me, let me share my screen real quick so we can and I'll see the two lots that we're talking about. So hopefully everyone can, everyone can see that. I can zoom in a little bit. So this is Front Street. This is D, this is B Street here. So you're, the, the Oceanfront Lodge sits here, treatment plant down on this side, the dog park is here just to orient everyone. Now this, so the C Street is a, is a paper street or an undeveloped street still right away. It has several city-owned utilities that run through this right away, but it is, is undeveloped at this point. So this is one of the properties that, that we're talking about. And then the other property is located just out of corner from it off of Second Street. And that is the, that is this property here. So they're both, they're both for, they're both city-owned properties. Both in really a key area for the city that we would like to see developed. Right next to Beachfront Park, you have within walking distance of the B Street Pier, the California Coastal Trail, the White House. And so that's where, what's before the council tonight is to take a little bit of an unorthodox approach in looking at property development or the sale of a property. In two thousand eighteen, November of two thousand eighteen and finished in two thousand nineteen, just this last year, the city took appropriate action to be able to dispose of these properties. We, we vetted it through, through public agencies as well as nonprofits. We didn't receive any, any interest in the property. So now it's really up to the city to do what we want. And I think from a city standpoint, we really need to take a look at these. And instead of ask, you know, how much one-time funding could we receive by just selling them? Well, let's put it out to developers and let's see what exactly people can envision on what they want to develop. And really, that's what the RFP tries to, tries to capture. So the, the RFP would be, would be a request for proposals. And the developer would then come back to the city and they would lay out exactly what they would want to, to do with these properties. In the RFP, we, we've tried to explain the area that we're trying to develop, trying to explain that, that it's envisioned to be an experiential type of commercial hub for the community with uses supportive to the residents and visitors. The ideal development would be one that not only creates local jobs, but is also a revenue generator for the city itself. The, like many proposals, this proposal has a, has a criteria in which the, in which the parcel or in which the, the application or the proposals would be evaluated. So those proposals include the qualifications and experience of the, of the developer and planning, design and permitting, actually getting the, the project done. There would be the quality of the development in the proposal. What is the intended use? What's the design, the degree of aesthetic improvements to the site, a degree of public benefit? That'll be evaluated on the ability for the property to generate property taxes and also transient occupancy taxes if that is a, if that is a use of a development. And then also the anticipated timeframe for purchase of, of development and the financial capacity of a developer in which to actually be able to complete this development. So that's, that's how we're going to, to choose this particular proposal that would be best. They will then submit in a separate sealed envelope, the actual price that they are willing to propose to, to, to purchase the properties for, as well as the, the commitment to, to develop these. I've also asked the, the proposer to give us some sort of, some sort of a guarantee in regard to the property development. You know, what, what's the timeframe, how, how many units, the occupancy rate and so on and so forth for the, for the development itself. So that's really what's before the councils wants to review this RFP, make any changes or suggestions the council sees fit. If the council does approve the, the RFP as it stands tonight or with some small changes, the, the ask would be that, that we as staff get it out really as soon as possible. So this will hopefully be, be released to the public as soon as tomorrow. If that's the case, the proposals will be due back on May fifteenth. And we could have something before the, before the council, June fifteenth. Reason why I wanted to get this out is this could be a really ideal time for these two parcels to be developed. The Front Street project, which Mr. Olson will be talking a little bit later on in the, in the agenda about, is set to kick off later this week. That will have major construction occurring along Front Street as well as C Street. And so there is some advantage to a developer if they, if they wanted to also perform the construction during that time as the streets will be closed, all contractors in the area, it's really the ideal time to, to try that, proceed with something like this. So that's, that's the, the reasoning before the timing. So without any, any questions from the council?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ware. Any questions for Mr. Ware about the, the RFP itself or the, the, the goals behind it?
I just had a quick one about, you know, how broad is the audience for the RFP? I mean, how many folks are we actually thinking about reaching?
So we'll, we will advertise through, through the, our local means and end methods. So we'll get the local developers there. There'll be other developers that, that we might know about that will also, you know, reach out to them as well. So it's what we'll try to do as large a reach as, as we can.
Okay.
You know, we'll even put it in building exchanges is another way to get offers. A lot of times contractors will know developers and so we put it in the building exchanges, they can also contact other people.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Ware?
So we don't, what were the criteria again for getting this RFP?
For?
For getting the?
So if you go on the, on the, the staff report, they're at the bottom of page two, Jason. There's seven, seven things there.
So there you go. So I'm sharing, sharing my screen now. So the basic RFP will require the developer.
For the benefit of the public.
Absolutely. So, so as part of the RFP, this is the basic structure of it and the different sections that we're going to be looking at. So basic cover letter, their qualifications, experience, the actual development proposal, tax generation, financial capabilities, disclosure of any conflicts, and then in a sealed envelope, their, their purchase price. As far as the criteria goes, this is how, this is the sort of the point structure of it. So a cover letter, basically, are they responsive to the RFP? That's five points. The qualifications, experience of the, of the developer itself, fifteen. The quality of the development is weighted much higher, so you have thirty points there. And then the ability for the property to generate property tax, sales tax, which really goes along to the, to the use of the property being one that will service tourists or the community is also heavily weighted. A timeframe of the development is, is ten points and then the financial capability of the proposed development is another ten points, which then equals the hundred. So that's how we would choose the, the best proposal. The other thing that I will throw up through the council, if council wants to designate two people to be on and on an ad hoc to sit on the selection panel, I would think that would be a good thing. So I'll throw that out for council consideration as well.
That sounds like it would be fun.
All right. Any other questions for, for Mr. Ware? Okay, I don't see any. Then let's, uh, let's, let's go back to the public then. Do we have any, any public comment? I do not see any hands up. Any emails received? Okay. Okay, then if we don't have any, I think that this is a Mr. Ware and I have talked about this extensively as a, as an, as an approach, and I think it's a really good approach. I appreciate staffs putting this together and I think that it, the, these properties are worth far more to us developed than they are as vacant assets. And so, and I also appreciate the, and have been a good, have been an advocate for not waiting what, how much money we can get out of these. I mean, yes, we possibly could sell them and have one-time money and then still have vacant lots. I think this approach of being able to have development happen is certainly a forward-thinking approach and one that I think will best suit the city long term. So excellent work, Mr. Ware and your team for putting this together. So, um, I would be happy to, to, to sit on this, since I've been a part of this. Do we have, is there somebody else? Jason, did you, would you like to do, help with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. That would be great. All right. We've taken public comment, then I'm, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the city manager to put out this RFP. And to approve the appointment of myself and, and Councilmember Greeno as the ad hoc. If you could just put those together.
I'll let someone else do it then.
authorized city manager to advertise request for proposals to develop two city-owned properties located adjacent to Second and C Streets. And to appoint Mayor Inscore and Councilmember Greeno to an ad hoc committee related to the sale.
All right, we have a, a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Sorry, Councilmember Greeno.
Yes.
Councilmember Foman.
Yes.
Councilmember Wright.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kime.
Yes.
Mayor Inscore.
Yes. Okay, um, very good. So get that out as quickly as you can. We look forward to possibly being able to, to see this at our second meeting in, in June. That would be, that would be very exciting. I'm checking our attendees. And I do not see Dr. Raywald with us yet, so we're gonna, we're gonna press forward. And we're going to look at the possibility of sending a letter of support for Contour Airlines. And I know that we have a staff report here and I think that, that Mayor Pro Tim Kime can also weigh in as our representative on the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority of why this is so important to us. So either one of you, I don't care who goes first, but I, I do, I do think it's important that the council hears from, from the, the airport authority as well, that this is not just a city council matter. This is a, a much broader community concern. So Heidi, if you don't mind, would you just sort of weigh in on this first?
Sure. And basically this letter is in support of Contour for a multitude of reasons. But mainly, they've done a really great job of having reliable service at an affordable price. um they've done a really great job of um having reliable service at an affordable price in Crescent City to the Bay Area at in Oakland. Um the other thing, uh DOT has they're the ones that opened this up to different offers. And so we want to send a clear message that this community wants Contour to continue with the good job that they've done. Uh in in the in the letter, I'm sure you've read that Contour is ADA accessible. Um they uh they did it. We did a survey that uh the majority of this community said that they want to go to Oakland um versus uh Boutique Air going north to Portland. Um the other thing is uh Contour is jet service. Boutique Air is a prop. So there's a dual prop and a single prop that um, you know, I feel I feel really confident flying in a jet. Just gonna throw that out there. Um and so I I think that I think that Contour has done a great job. I I think that continuity, they've done a great job of showing this community that that the community can trust them to have on-time flights and uh manage reliability and maintenance. And um so for that reason, we'd like to stick with with uh Contour and and make a make a point to the DOT that boutique is not what this community needs. If you look at our um our implements, eighty-five percent on a on an average monthly, about eighty-five percent implements, even you know, i- i- in rough-go weather, they they've done a really good job for us. So um there's thirty seats available. Boutique has eight or nine. Clearly, if you wanted to go down to the Bay Area, well, once we have sports again in the world, but if you wanted to go down to the Bay Area and you have a couple of family members and you're all gonna fly down there together, you're you will have just booked the entire plane if if you go with boutique. So it's it's, you know, the it serves this community to have uh Contour continue. So we would appreciate we would appreciate the support.
Okay, Mr. Weir, anything else that you would like to add?
Uh no, not not really uh anything from our side, just that I would echo uh Mayor Pro Tim Kimes sentiments in regard to Contour and the and the service that that they provide to our community. Uh it's it's been a wonderful experience from just a personal side going down uh and to have the ability to carry more passengers, uh especially that that Bay Area route, I think is uh is very much beneficial to our community.
Okay, anybody anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, I I will just say that that uh I I remember when we were looking at this initially and we looked at boutique and there is certainly some attractiveness to this idea of almost flying in what feels like a a chartered flight with a small group of people. But when you look at at what uh Contour has been able to provide for this community over the last few couple of years, uh you know, even things like groups coming in here, like the groups that have come in here from Japan. There's no way that boutique would have been able to do that. We would have been chartering buses and having people riding on a bus either from Portland or San Francisco or Oakland or whatever. Um you know, e- even this, the last, the the group that that came, um, we were able to charter a second Contour jet. And so we had two flights coming in and going back out. Boutique just can't provide those things. It it doesn't mean that they're a bad company. It doesn't mean that they wouldn't do a good job. It just doesn't seem like they meet the needs of our community. And uh so.
Which Blake, honestly, that was in question with boutique. Uh the DOT felt like, you know, this community couldn't support the need for thirty seats. But based on if just numbers alone, just based on the implements, we've proven that wrong.
Yeah, yeah. And and DOT has 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 responded well to commu- to the outreach of the community. I know when I was in Washington DC, prior to the the whole con choosing Contour, they were very receptive to hearing a a a combined community voice that said, this is what our needs really are. And when they pushed back and said, we don't, we don't necessarily agree with you. Um clearly, when the community all spoke with one voice, they approved the alternate EAS that got us Contour, which was the right decision. So um I'm with Heidi. This is really important that we that we continue with that unified voice. Okay, um, any uh a- any other thoughts? Then if not, I think I have consensus. I appears to have consensus to pen the letter and I will put my signature on it. Um or my virtual signature, which I now have, which is really, really get taking social distancing to a new extreme that 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 we now electronically sign things for the mayor. Uh but uh it is what it is. So, all right, if you put the letter together, um council would appreciate that. Uh. Oh, I guess I should take public comment. I'm sorry. I apologize. Was there any public comment in regards to this letter of support of uh to the DOT? I I don't see any. Okay, very good. Then we'll move on um to uh item number sixteen. Um, and we're getting close to the end here, which is I this is the fastest meeting we've had in like forever. I know I know.
Great.
I see lots and lots of smiles, which is which is interesting. Uh so, all right. Uh Chief Griffin, uh talk to us about uh all things flag-related.
Okay, well, I thought we might not have the same Fourth of July that we've had in the past based on everything. I don't know, it might be up there a little bit. So I was trying to come up with an idea to kind of integrate community a little bit, you know, put us together and still make it look like Fourth of July if it doesn't happen. Um I found some flag kits online on Home Depot. They're started out around ten dollars-ish. Um you just mount them on your house. They're three foot by five foot, five foot, made in America flags. Um I talked to the local Home Depot store, was able to get the couple of dollars off that price. They were willing to me um down as low as they could. And then I when I reached out and to the Wild Rivers Community Foundation um and was able to secure funding through very gracious donation by them, uh twenty-five hundred dollars. So we're able to get three hundred and twelve plus a little bit extra um flag kits in order to install or actually hand out so they could be installed around the city and the county. Um I reached out and spoke with Sheriff Apperson and also Commander DP, um of local CHP. And they were jumped at the idea to help uh pass those flags out with using as much social distancing as we can to make appointments and drop them off. Um so the plan is basically when we get consensus approval uh tonight, we'll go forward and order the flags. I'll start with a Facebook post to get a list together. Um if the list exceeds how many flags we have, I'd like to give preference to military veterans and also senior citizens, just at least for the first year. Um the plan going forward for that that I had is I also located the same flags without the kit. Um they're about five dollars apiece. Get those online. Um so going forward, I wouldn't might, I would like to establish a um a way for people to donate if they want to uh when things get a little better, um so we can keep this flag program going. Um and that way it's just kind of helped brighten up the area. Uh one of the ideas I had that I'll push forward also is to kind of go around the parade route and see how many flags I can get up um on kind of like the businesses or homes around there. So then maybe people can even drive the parade routes and at least see a parade of flags. It was kind of just the idea I had.
My I just, you know, and I've been thinking about this, Chief. Um and while I think it was, I think it was great to reach out to um the sheriff and and to uh Commander DP. Um I think my just my initial feeling about this is especially with the uncertainty of the Fourth of July is I I really kind of would like to prioritize this being sort of our pilot program and try to put as many flags on as many city residences as possible as opposed to the, I mean, once you get out in the county, I mean, you could have i- if we can get people in the it within our one point six square miles, we can get a lot, a a lot of of visual of value uh by by prioritizing within the city limits with these flags. Um I I don't know. I just feel like that that this is gonna be a strange Fourth of July and the idea that that we could drive around downtown and and in our city neighborhoods and see flags out everywhere just seems like that would be a really nice thing as opposed to them being scattered all over the community. But that's just my thought. Fully supporting of the idea. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Heidi?
Um, I I know that sometimes there's um a blue pole and a flag on it for some downtown businesses. And I've noticed that some have them and some don't. Was that a a different flag program way back when?
Mr. Weir?
Yes, I believe that is a that is a different flag program and I'm and I'm glad you brought it up. I do not have all the details uh of that flag program. But it can certainly bring something like that back to the council so we can make sure that this program uh is is really in conjunction with that program and and we don't have a duplicate of services. It will be more of one that can build off of each other.
Isn't that other one through the scouts?
I I believe so.
I was talking to somebody at the fairgrounds when we had a walk-through uh about a week after and that's what I was told. So I was gonna start looking into that because that was specifically for the businesses through that parade route. So, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions for for Chief Griffin?
No question. I just think it's a great idea. Um the more that we can come together as a country, I think that the better at this time, you know, it's it's a tough time for our country and you know, anything that can foster unity right now is a good thing.
Fly your flag.
Yeah, fly your flag. Um I just echo what um Blake had said earlier about prioritizing city residents. I think it can just get to be a little much to start going out in the county and it's, yeah, just too big of a program. A nice narrow focus on city residents, I think it's very appropriate for what you're trying to get out here, chief. Again, though, very much appreciate the community-minded um notion that's coming in there that I, yeah, I appreciate that you want to do more, but we'll scale you back a little and let you know that's very much okay. Um great program. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, um, let's open up and see if we have any public comment on this idea of of receiving this this grant money and providing flags in our community. Any public comment? Yes, I see a a hand up David Gerhart. So if Mr. Weir, if you could activate him so he could speak.
Mr. Gerhart should be good to go.
All right. Hi, guys. Um I want to say one thing that doesn't have anything to do with this right now. I want to tell you guys that you're doing a bang-up, great job for this city. The way this is working and everything, I'm just totally in awe about how well you guys are looking out for the community and keeping us informed. Second of all, for the chief, I'd like to donate two hundred dollars from our food truck to go towards this flag program. So just let me know where you want the money.
Uh, Mr. Weir, donate that to the city of Crescent City in that City Hall, correct?
Uh that's correct. You make that to the city and then just make sure you put uh, you know, in the in the comment line to the, you know, uh American flag uh donation.
Okay, I'll get it done.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your your kind words and and your support. All right, any other public comment? Okay, I don't see any. Uh so then I'll close public comment and we'll bring it back to the council. Uh this does have a resolution um attached to it because it's in a budget amendment. So I'm looking for a motion for uh action on resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-one.
Uh I say we uh uh adopt resolution number uh twenty twenty dash thirty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Crescent City amending the fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty budget.
I have a motion from Councilmember Wright. Do I have a second?
Second. Second that.
I have choose one of them. Uh we got multiple seconds, so that's awesome. Uh all right, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Fallman?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kime?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes, very good. Okay, um if I'm not mistaken, uh we have, we have exhausted all of our other agenda items. Um so, yes.
I think that there was one more action that we needed to take as far as receiving direction from the council to maintain the donation program.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um and what is the what is the chief or Mr. Weir, what's your thoughts on 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 the continuity of this going forward? What do you must?
Mr. Mayor, my thoughts are just to leave the budget line available for such as um Mr. Gerhart wanted to donate two hundred dollars. If I'm just, if we leave that there through the year, I don't, I believe that's possible. Bit of people direct their funds to go to it. We just add it in that line. And as we get that in there, I'll purchase the flags through the Home Depot or I have a couple of other sources that are right around the same price. Um, one of the ideas going forward that I had was to utilize if people need had faded flags also to also purchase some of the five-dollar flags and have those so we can just replace them too. But that's going forward, just maintain that budget line so we can take donations specifically for that.
Seems reasonable to me. Okay, I think you have consensus to maintain the program, do what needs to be done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um with a without having Dr. Raywald here to do his presentation, we we need to go ahead and move through um into our agenda and um and go to item number thirteen. And if Dr. Raywell comes in during this discussion, we can pause our discussion and allow him to give his presentation um at that at that time. So uh if everyone would find number thirteen under new business, first item under new business, that is uh where we are going to go at this point in time, COVID nineteen emergency update, discussion of deferral of various cities' charges, fines, penalties and remittance mittances due to the COVID nineteen emergency. Mr. Weir?
Thank you, Mayor Inscore. Yes, I have been uh I've been texting actually back and forth with Dr. Raywald. So he does apologize. Uh there was a a bit of a an emergency uh type call with the public health officials that he is on right now. So he's receiving updates and then coordination with some of the other uh public health officials. So he does apologize for not being able to uh to attend. Uh he uh he does not know that call will end by the time we're done with this item. Uh but I will touch base with them uh one more time. Uh if uh if need be, we can have him come back uh at our next council meeting possibly and the and give us a uh update there. I will say there was a new letter from Dr. Raywall uh that he put out uh today, uh just this afternoon. Uh and so the the public can believe view that, I believe, uh on the Delmore County Public Health Page. Uh so.
Should we have someone read that letter if if Dr. Raywald's unable to uh join us?
We certainly can.
I will I will pull it up right now. That's a great idea, Heidi. So go Eric, go ahead. I Mr. Weir, go ahead and start through your part and I will pull that up.
Perfect. That way it gives the Dr. Raywald a chance. If it's called, does get over time, he can uh he can present it. Uh if not, then then yes, absolutely. We can read it for the for the public. So so this presentation, I'll go ahead and I'll I'll share my screen. We we have it basically broken into uh into three different parts. So, so this presentation, I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll share my screen. We have it basically broken into, into three different parts. So we have the, the, the basic, you know, what is, what is the city doing to address, you know, this emergency? Taking a look at some of those actions that have occurred over the past, over the past month, really. It was a little over a month ago that, that we first announced this, actually a month and a half ago, we first announced this emergency. And in fact, the, the resolution that does that has a, as a 60 day limit on it. So if this emergency is continuing, which we do anticipate that it will be in some way, shape or form on May 4th, the council will be asked to extend that emergency at that time. And city has, the city has taken several actions in between those times. One closure of all city facilities, that's city hall, that's housing authority, police department, fire department, swimming pool, playgrounds. All these things have been closed down. We do appreciate the public's patience with this and utilizing remote efforts to, to access the city and city staff. All employee travels canceled. We have additional cleaning of the facilities that goes for all of our public facilities such as city hall, as well as additional cleaning of all the public bathrooms. So then I'll be thirdly disinfected twice a day. We have a separation of shifts. And so this is where we broke the public works group into two shifts. The police department is also operating under, under separate shifts. They always have, but additional measures have been put in place to limit their personal contact with each other. The fire department, the same thing. We're limiting the, the number of people that go on the emergency medical calls. Just again, trying to provide a little bit of resiliency, a little bit of redundancy and how we operate to, to hopefully allow us to, to continue emergency response that we, that we do offer. And so we've tried to make sure that those things are happening. Purchase of IT equipment to allow staff to telework. This was on the consent calendar. So that came to a total of approximately $25,000 to, to outfit city staff to be able to comply with the, the orders to work remotely. Suspension of shutting off water and sewer for non-payment. This was, this was directed by the council when this first started. Also suspension of late fees for water and sewer payments. Again, trying to do, trying to do everything we can. This is consistent with what some of the other utilities have done as well. Suspension of late fees for some other services, mainly lab or different sort of late fee type of, type of things that we have within our current fee schedule. Assign staff to the Emergency Operations Center, the EOC. We have eight or nine key members that are working primarily in the, in the EOC. That includes Linda Jangle, who's Deputy Chief of the Finance. Linda, Linda Lever, that dates me a little bit. Linda Jangle was a city employee when I first started here. So we had Linda Lever in the Deputy, in the Finance Department of the EOC and myself in the management. We have Robin, who's doing an excellent job assisting in the PIO side of things. We have both of our chiefs, which are working in the operations division. We have Sarah Enos, who's helping on the financial side. Director Went is taking up a key role on the economic development side, as well as Chrissy Rawlings is assisting in the finance department as well. Professional service contracts for economic development. Today, the city has allocated $45,000 for these economic development type of, type of services for the community. That's bringing on the specialists like Chuck Wolf of Cloud Wolf and Associates, Rob Holman. And I'll have a director went and speak to this in just a second. This has been instrumental, I think, in trying to first find out what the business needs are in our community, how the businesses are being affected, and then trying to, to get the information out to them as it's just a rapidly changing dynamic with all of the different programs that are coming down, how quick they're changing, how quick they're, they're drying up in the terms of PPP and then hopefully getting reestablished again. So this is a, this is a key component of that. With that, I'd like to switch over to Director Went. So if she could, if she could pop in and take control of the, of the screen, that would be wonderful. See, so Alaska, last director went to hopefully pop in. There she is. Good evening, Holly. She's muted right now.
Clicking a lot of things at once. Thank you. Hello, Marion Score and council members. I'm here to talk to you about the Economic Injury Survey and what we're doing with the Economic Resiliency Task Force. So let me get this up. Make sure everyone can see it. Can you guys see everything? Okay?
Yes.
All right. So this is the update for April 20th. And I just want to bring to a city manager, we're also had said it's been exactly one month, 31 days since we had the lockdown. And at that time in the United States, we had a handful of cases. Now we have so many more. So in a matter of 30 days, all of our worlds have changed, but working with the business community, it's been changing every single week. So one of the first things we did as the Economic Resiliency Task Force is we started a survey. Luckily, Rob Homeland was helping us and he was very key on knowing what was happening in Delmar, in Humboldt County. And getting an economic injury survey was important so that we could figure out how our businesses are doing, extract what the economic injury is to our community, figure out how to take that information and use that to work with community partners. And then also do what we're doing now is turning around and reaching back out to the community so they understand how some of these businesses are feeling. So the whole thing was we need to ask, we need to listen and we know, now we need to show that we care because it is a huge issue what these businesses are trying to navigate in the last 30 days. So of the 112 responses at the time, this was two and a half weeks after it, two weeks ago at that time. Forty percent of the businesses were still open, but 57% were temporarily closed and two were, had to permanently close because of this. And at the time we asked, what do they need help with? And, and at the time, 61% said cash flow. I just took a look quick at the one that's out right now. On the one that's out right now that we're getting feedback from, it's over 90% need help with cash flow. So this is something that's getting increasingly dire for these businesses who have no revenue coming in. And then what I'm really excited about is the city was really forward thinking and getting our consultants on board. Because when we asked this question, it really showed where they were at. Two and a half weeks, we asked if you need any help with a disaster relief loan. And 48% said maybe and 20%, 21% said yes. And could you have benefit from a business advisor or business advice? And at that time it was 44, 44, 45% maybe, 18% yes. Now we know that over the last two weeks, this has changed drastically. More businesses are actively saying, I don't know how to access these loans and I don't know how to navigate this time period. A lot of our businesses, when this survey came out, they said, we're holding tight. We're seeing how things go. It's only been two and a half weeks, like two and a half weeks isn't that bad. Maybe we can just, you know, you scrimp a little bit here, save here, and we can get through this. And it's continuing. So these numbers get extent, will get larger as the weeks go on. And the critical costs that they were having, that they were most concerned about was rent, utility and payroll. These are three key things for business, business owners and managers in our community. And then this is just a little snapshot of what it looks like for them. In the first two and a half weeks, we had 1.12 million dollars loss of revenue in those 112 businesses. 62 businesses were temporarily closed with two of them permanent and two additional ones permanently closed. And in just those businesses, 252 employees had been laid off. And this is something that's impacting the entire community, all of Delmar County. 55 of the businesses that did the survey were in the outlying areas and 55% were within the city limits. We have service providers, hospitality, retailers, real estate, nonprofits. The variety of businesses is astounding and we weren't even able to access at this point with this survey, a lot of our agricultural businesses. And a lot of this effort was really a collaboration between city staff and Chamber of Commerce calling businesses and asking them to fill out this survey, as well as reaching out to them via social, every form of social media that we could figure out. Some of the interesting things were the concerns. Some of the concerns and comments that they were able to share, how am I going to pay my bills and feed my family? The unknown, making it difficult to project income and meeting expenses. Income enough to maintain overhead and keep my employee. Hoping that people still call when they need a plumber and aren't too afraid to let us in to do the work. I'm very concerned that we will lose our summer clients. That makes about 90% of our bookings and may need to close or sell the house. I'm concerned for the spiritual and emotional health of our community. While we're able to meet online, we are designed to be in community. Another person, possible closing, safety of staff, keeping enough capital to be able to open after this is all over. These are just some of the comments and concerns. And the thing that was really heartwarming about this whole researching is that these businesses voluntarily followed the rules and closed. Because of care. So, sorry, excuse me. It's emotional when I think about it, all the comments I've read. So. With all that, it's very important that remember resilience is the ability of people, communities and systems to manage shocks and stressors and build stronger, more prosperous communities. And that's actually what we've seen. We've seen that our community has come together in an amazing way. Churches are being supports and reaching out with social media, whether it's Facebook Lives, Zoom meetings, videos, linking people together, sharing music and art. We really have an amazing community that's doing this. Our integral nonprofit partners are lending helping hands, childcare cancer, all our daily bread ministry. And the North Coast Small Business Development Center, SBDC, is servicing our community in Humboldt County with daily, daily supports to help them learn how to navigate this. And then our businesses themselves, these owners are so resilient, so hardworking, so creative. Porta Pints is not only trying to continue to stay open, they're changing what they do to serve our community. Taking bakes to their home, trying to make profit with selling merchandise and beer and growlers. But at the same time promoting a photo contest, promoting people getting outside, promoting people sharing with each other, looking at art, getting creative and, and being part of their community online. Porta Pints is a place where people come to hang out. And so they've created this network, this community online with their Facebook and Instagram pages that is truly helping to keep people together and, and to keep the community together. Ocean Air Farms, they've been open every weekend. And now this last weekend, Julie Jo and her team of masked veggie vigilantes are allowing people to do a drive-through farm stand where she posts what she's going to have the next day. You figure it out, you drive around the farm stand and you get to pick up your veggies with minimal contact. One person asks, one person gets the veggie and the other person deals with the money. So we're not having any kind of cross contamination. They're just being very creative and loving and supporting to the community. And then there's just so many examples of, of these businesses being creative. Not just being creative to survive, but being creative to support the community. Family Fish Fry by Fisherman's Restaurant. They know families are at home together. They know it's a challenge to get to the grocery store. They know if you have a compromised immune system, going to the grocery store is not as safe as getting a delivery or takeout. It's just a safer choice. Seaquake. Seaquake is, is following the footsteps of Fred Meyer and Walmart where you pull up to a stall, you have a number, you call it in and they'll bring it out to your car for you. Hayuchi Cafe is, is providing a schedule so you can plan your meals if you want to and you can call ahead and get your order. And underneath each, each one of these, you'll see the comments of the community, just grateful for them to be there doing this. Making Wednesday night easier, making it a lot of food for a reasonable price. And then just really Hayuchi Cafe participating in the community and being creative. And that's really, you know, one of the things that the Economic Resiliency Team is trying to do. We're trying to search out these businesses that are being successful, support them, give them positive feedback. And then take those ideas and those winning strategies and trying to engage with the communities that haven't caught up to this yet. If you think about it, it's been four weeks. The first week it's, you can't go to work tomorrow. Okay, well then I have to deal with it, what's in my office. That Friday, the CARES Act was approved. People didn't understand what that was till the following Monday. You had five days to get an application in for the idle or the payment paycheck protection program. If you were a small business owner that was an independent contractor or self-employed, you had one additional week. And then five days after you were able to do that, an announcement came out and said, within 20 days, all the money's gone for small businesses. So our small businesses had 15, maybe 20 days to not only deal with what's occurring in their lives, their families, their small communities, but also try as fast as they could to get some funding. And unfortunately, not a lot of our businesses were able to. So one of the highlights of the Economic Resiliency Task Force is that we were able to get to $140,000 together just for small businesses. But what happened was we got the program together and we got it out there. And just when we said, here's this money available, the CARES Act money was available. $349 billion in payment protection, $17 billion for idle and SBA loans. And so they were all forced to do all these applications at the same time, not knowing what's easiest, what do you pay back and how do you get it back? But luckily, thanks to Chuck Wolf with Cloudy and Wolf Consulting, 13 local businesses have been able to spend valuable time with Chuck. And we're able to get 11 applications to Arcade Economic Development. And we should be here back anytime. How many of those businesses will get the $5,000 that specifically for our community? Just for our community. And the wonderful thing about this is we still have money left. Even though all the other SBA loans and CARES Act funding for small businesses is gone, we still have some small business loans available for our community at zero interest. And that's really important. And we're going to really keep reaching out to local businesses. But what we do know is that it's a lot. We're asking a lot of our local businesses to step out there and be vulnerable and, and to get this support. And we're just really trying to be encouraging and supporting of them that it's okay to ask for help and we're here for them because they do so much for us. The other thing that the Economic Resiliency Task Force is doing is, is we're creating small business webinars. One of the things that's great about having Chuck Wolf, Wolf working with us is he's worked with us before with CDBG programs and he knows our community businesses. He knows how they function. And even though North Coast SBDC has webinars, sometimes our local Delmar County business owners just want something a little smaller, a little more intimate. And we're offering this with Rob Homeland. And we did our first one two weeks ago. On the seventh, we had 21 participants and 37 views. That's 58 businesses participated and we're able to get this information. From that, I know we got applications for the small loan stabilization. And we know we're hoping to do more. We have another webinar tomorrow. And this one is after doing some research with some other communities and the tools they've given to their businesses. Rob Homeland's going to go over how to operate your business safely during COVID-19. Overview of current guidelines, helping people understand what Governor Newsom's order says. It's 14 pages. It's kind of confusing. And a lot of businesses close because they don't know how to navigate through that. And we're hoping to help them. There's also going to be an opportunity for questions and answer. And we're also going to help them note, figure out who to contact if they have questions. Something else that's been a wonderful collaboration, thanks to Rob Homeland again. He let us know that Las Co's Outpost had the Humboldt Chowdown. A list of all the businesses in Humboldt County that were, all the restaurants that were open and serving food. And luckily Cindy Vossberg and the Chamber team had been calling every restaurant in our community for the, the previous two weeks. And we got in touch with Jessica at Las Co's Outpost and, and Wild Rivers. And they were able within 24 hours to help us get the Delmar Chowdown. So you can go to the Wild Rivers outpost and figure out what are all the restaurants that are open and how can you contact them and get food? So we're really trying to support our local businesses with that. And that was such great timely work with Cindy Vossberg in the chamber. And so we're still working on so many things. It's still, we need to help these businesses figure out how to access financial supports because cash flow and the cost of having a because cash flow and the cost of having a business where you're not getting revenue is overwhelming. So the team is working to try and figure out, should the stimulus package come down that they think another three hundred billion? How are we going to help position Del Norte County businesses to get in line for the Payment Protection Loan Program? And some of the other funding, because it went so quickly before. And how can we position with Ross Welch at AEDC and the other community partners we're working with to help that? Also helping them figure out all the other loan programs. They need resources, keep helping them understand as the safety guidelines and the orders changes between how we can engage and how we can't. We have the four new categories Dr. Raywald discusses in his letter today about social distancing, face coverings, disinfecting and staying at home. How do we help businesses understand that? And also assist them in getting the supplies they need to open and stay open. And always encouraging any business that has any question. The county and the task force would really like you to call Dr. Raywald and ask him about your particular business. Every business is equally important. We're going to keep tracking the economic injury so we can keep having this survey and this data to advocate and continue to collaborate with community partners. We're so grateful for Leila Roberts at SBDC and our consultants and Ross Welch to be able to, as these orders, as these funds come down and all these regulations that we have key players helping Del Norte County sift through the information to figure out, okay, now how do we best serve our businesses? And then the most important thing right now is part of the CARES Act was the stimulus that came to individuals. And we really need to encourage our community to invest in our local businesses. This is going to be really important for us moving forward. So how can we support our businesses? We need to use it to stimulate our local economy. We need to ask our members of our community to think before they click on their online cart. Because when it comes down to it, our local businesses are the ones that support our community fundraisers. They're the ones that help our kids get basketball uniforms and they're the ones that buy the Girl Scout cookies and the football pads for the team. They're the ones that help with the music for all of our marching bands and all of our recreation that's so important to our wellness. And then we need to encourage our businesses by following them online and giving them support. Just like our churches and our groups are supporting our community members. We need to turn around and support our business owners and just give them that like button and let them know that you appreciate them and what they're doing. Because they're having to learn and work and really figure out how to navigate this new world. And so, moving forward, our retail stores, our retail stores, service providers and salons, we really need to shop locally and think of things that you might need now or later or gift certificates. Because if we don't think now about that, these businesses might not be there later when we need them. Because they haven't been able to get through this time. And if we pool together, let's let the other small towns and communities support Amazon and online shops. And we can even send our favorite, our shops like Local Boys, Tsunami Beach Company and Johnson's Gift Garden and Home. We can really support them now and help them get through these times. There's also Fine Spine Chiropractic and all these other places that offer massage and our hair salons, all these businesses. We're gonna need haircuts sometime. We're gonna need to, you know, I was, Fine Spine did this thing about you're gonna need chiropractic work after working at home and all these different like situations. And it's true, we're gonna need these businesses and we're gonna have to think about that now as a community. One of the other things that we did with the group is that we got this Del Norte video challenge and we're still looking for submissions. People keep sending them in. And not only do we got this Del Norte, but boy, does this really make us love Del Norte. So don't forget to hashtag these things on posts. And people can send videos to me at Hwentcrescentcity.org because we're compiling more videos to do some more outreach for the community. And that's my ending thought for what we're working on with this team. And you guys thought it was gonna be a short night.
You're all muted.
Thank you Director Went. If you can stop sharing your screen, that would be wonderful.
All right. So we're gonna, we're gonna take a moment for that. Thank you Ms. Went for all that you provided. But Dr. Raywald has joined us. And so I'd like to give Dr. Raywald an opportunity to share with us. It's a pretty nice segue with the things that you just shared. And then the council may have questions for you Ms. Went after Dr. Raywald speaks. So Dr. Raywald, thank you so much for joining us. We know you're busy, but we would very much appreciate being able to hear from you. We thank you for your letter today and anything that you would like to share with us.
Well, thanks for inviting me. One thing I wanted to mention to Holly before she goes, if she's leaving. I'd like to have her send me how to attend that webinar she mentioned tomorrow. I'd like to kind of tune in if I can. Aside from that, you know, we've been thinking about this quite a bit. And the reason is because a lot of the things that came down with the governor's order, they were a tough fit for Del Norte. And quite honestly, because we weren't seeing the same kind of disease that people downstate were. And I don't think there was any room or time for that kind of distinction to be made when they passed the order down. They just needed to get the order to go and get people on board and doing those things to protect the populace. And you know, I don't wanna try and create alarm or anything, but I think if you understand the consequences of not doing this, you understand the reason for the order. And the consequences would be that there would be no flattening of the curve. And the peak number of cases would already have far exceeded our hospital many times over. And we probably have over a thousand people in this county dead from COVID-19 by this time, if nothing had been done. And probably well on our way to three thousand. And that's the reality of what this virus would do unchecked. And there's just no getting around that. That's exactly what would have happened. That's not gonna happen now. I don't think it's gonna happen in the future. It's a little bit uncertain where the trend is gonna go downstate, but so far the case counts in places like San Francisco and Los Angeles where Santa Clara County, they've been following the very lowest projection line for all the possible scenarios of implementing social distancing and stay-at-home orders. And so basically the take-home message is it worked. And none of those nightmarish scenarios are likely to occur. Now we gotta figure out how we can safely back out and get all these businesses that Holly so ably presented back on their feet and doing it in a way that doesn't endanger people and take lives unnecessarily. Now is the purpose of the letter bulletin I posted today. I wanted, I wanted people to understand that we are thinking about this and that the key thing is that the measures that were put in place as part of the governor's orders, all of them taken as a whole. The core elements are the parts that I think are gonna get carried forward. And the reason I say that is partly just our own assessment of it, but also what got handed down last week at the federal level. Because the White House's reopening plan basically states the same thing, that there are certain parameters of personal behavior that have to be maintained. And those have to be incorporated into business behavior as well. And that's really what prompted me to write this and distribute it today is because I wanted businesses to start thinking along these lines as well, that there is a new normal out there that's gonna be in place for a while. Because if you take all of that away, we will go back to the potential nightmare scenario that I just mentioned. And I don't think anybody wants that. That would be disastrous for the economy in its own way, probably much worse in the end. I want people to start thinking about it because I think we're gonna get some news about this, maybe as soon as this week, but certainly within a couple of weeks. And I think if people are ready to go on the day that we are given some freedom to make any changes at the local level, it's to everybody's advantage. So that was the main reason for the letter. There's a little more work that I need to do to kind of give people a little more guidance on what I think's gonna need to happen. I don't want to get too far ahead because I know, I'm pretty certain that the state is gonna be handing down some guidance to us for local planning, probably within the next week. There's been hints to that effect on some of the conferences I've been on. No one is really pinning down a date because everyone is so busy trying to get all this ready that I don't think they can, they can do that with any confidence. But I thought it's good for people to start thinking about, how do you incorporate wearing masks in the office? How do you design your office space or your business space with social distancing in mind? What do you might need to think about for ventilation or air conditioning or things to combat a respiratory virus, an airborne droplet borne virus that could be in your office or your business space randomly at any moment? They just need to start thinking in a different way. And I think that's gonna pay off with doing a little advanced planning now in anticipation of what's gonna be changing, I think, in the fairly near future. I wish that we'd had more flexibility going into this, but honestly, I don't have the power to lift the governor's order. As a local health officer, I have to, I have to carry out his order. I'm, I've got a tiny little bit of wiggle room and interpretation of certain things, but I can't waive it. I can't ignore it. I can't refuse to enforce it. They actually have the power to remove me from office if that were to take place. I don't think that's probably the best choice. So, you know, we have to follow the rules from the state until they decide that it's time to change. But it's good to start planning now because I think the change is coming pretty soon. And I think that's pretty much a good summary of my thinking as of today on the issue. I know it's a, it's a big issue on everyone's minds and believe me, I understand. I think I mentioned in a message to the community a couple of weeks ago that my own family has had to close down a restaurant. They have, they have actually a couple of restaurants and a brewery and they're trying to keep one site open and running. And they're doing it basically with just the people in their family and it's been a tough challenge. So I know how this works firsthand. So I'm kind of right there with everybody, but I can't change the law and I can't change the governor's mind until the governor's ready to do it.
Ben, it's Corey Yarnett.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Raywald. I really appreciate your leadership in all of this. And I don't know if any council member have, has any specific questions that you might be able to weigh in on. But I would certainly open up and see if there's, yes, Councilmember Fallman.
I have more questions about the disease itself. What can you tell us about its behavior and its general resiliency? I mean, of course, there's, you know, wash your hands and use hand sanitizer, but I mean, just how tough is the virus, I guess in layman's terms to put it? And what's the danger of it mutating and getting stronger?
Good question. People have been following the virus and doing analysis in labs. They've already picked up on several hundred minor mutations that have been reported. There's nothing that has showed up so far that we think has affected the behavior of the virus. But you know, in the middle of a pandemic, a place like New York or New Jersey where they're just trying to keep things together, there'd be little chance to really investigate that. You know, there's been some speculation whether there's different strains of the virus already circulating that might account for why some people have such a hard time with it and other people just sort of brush it off. I don't think anyone has proven that one way or another. The virus is reasonably stable in the environment, but it doesn't last, it doesn't do very well in heat. Tends to dry it out and it tends to inactivate it. I've seen various reports anywhere from three days to seven days. I think a safe, a safe number, if you have a space in your room or your home or something where you thought there was some sort of contamination, if you can close the door and walk away for a week, it's gonna be fine. I don't think the virus would survive beyond that.
Okay.
It's fairly infectious, moderate infection rate at least. It's significantly more infectious than the flu. And because we have no immunity to it, no prior exposure, it's dangerous. It's tough on people, especially if they're elderly or they have chronic medical conditions that put them at higher risk. Younger people, not so much. I mean, there are some young people who do get admitted, but for the most part, they're gonna do fine with it. And we also think that there's a fairly high number of people who are going undetected. We just don't have a good way of analyzing that because the way to do that would be with immunoglobulin testing, to look for antibodies to prior exposure. Those tests are just beginning to come online. They're not widely available at all. We're not gonna see that here for some time.
I guess my other question would have to do more with the numbers that I see, percentages of infections and populations infected. The story or the narrative is that since this virus seems to be infecting less, there's been less deaths all in all, that maybe some people are, you know, should be, feel a little safer. I mean, I feel like that's false confidence and false hope. And I'd just like to get your thinking more about just the numbers and stats coming out about the virus.
Yeah, you know, from my perspective, in some ways it behaves a lot like other respiratory viruses of its type. I think it probably is a little more aggressive than what we've seen before. It's hard to quantify that. But you know, if you don't get exposed to something as a child, you know, a cold virus of any sort, including the coronaviruses, and you get it later in life, you usually do have a rough time with it. And you know, we see that all the time. There's always exceptions and people for, by chance, just bad luck, they don't get exposed to everything they're supposed to get exposed to when they're a kid. And they come down with something in their forties or fifties that really knocks them back and they have a bad pneumonia or they might have meningitis. I mean, a lot of the things that we're seeing associated with this virus, we see from time to time in people, just as a normal matter, of course, for medical care. And so that's, that part of it seems to fit the expected behavior. What's different about this is because of the scope. It's just that everybody is susceptible all at the same time. And that's not been seen before for maybe hundreds of years. So it's something new in that sense, but the susceptibility of the population is the issue. Not necessarily the behavior of the virus or the toxicity of it. It's just that everyone being susceptible means that all the older people, all the people my age, certainly and above, we're gonna likely have a much rougher time and there's a better chance that some of us are not gonna make it.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Dr. Raywald, council members?
I do.
Councilmember Greenow?
Dr. Raywald, you had stated the purpose of the stay-at-home order was to flatten the curve. In your opinion, have we somewhat accomplished that?
Are you talking about locally or statewide?
Statewide.
Yes.
Okay. As far as some of the studies that are out there, a lot of them have started to change their their assumptions as to what the death toll would be if the virus got out, I guess, widespread. What are, what's your opinion on some of the studies, like the one in Massachusetts that showed that it was a little more, it's possible that it was a little more widespread than they were anticipating?
Well, I think a lot of us have assumed that there's been more transmission. I mean, even in the very early stages of the Chinese experience with outbreak in January, there were people modeling the data that was coming out of China. And they were arguing that probably the real prevalence rate was at least four times higher. So, and I think they made a pretty good case for that even back then. So in that sense, yeah, I mean, the eventual death rate from this, I'm almost certain if it's managed well, that we can manage cases in the medical care system is gonna be lower than what we're seeing now. Because what we're seeing now is the worst sampling, is the people who are very symptomatic or likely to become very symptomatic as opposed to sampling everybody, which includes the people who are barely symptomatic or not symptomatic at all. And the data that we're getting now from all around the country is showing that there's some evidence that there's more asymptomatic cases than we know about. But again, it's an unknown for us. So that's gonna be solved over time and with more study by institutions around the country. And the longer we go studying the virus as it's moving through the country, the better our projections. And the longer we go studying the virus as it's moving through the country, the better our, our projections is, are going to be. The trouble is that what I mentioned before is that the susceptibility is still the driving factor. And, and we can't presume that anybody has prior immunity to a virus that we believe is generally new. We can't presume that cross immunity exists because A, most of the time it doesn't, and sometimes cross immunity can actually promote virus infection. That we've seen that in other viruses. So we have to presume that everyone's susceptible. And when you have 330 million people susceptible at the same time, even if the eventual death rate is very low, that's still a huge number of people entering into the medical system unless you're compensating by doing what we're doing. So the susceptibility of the population is the real driving force with this virus. And so limiting the transmission is the only way to prevent that from happening. And that's flattening that curve out. And what it's really doing is stretching out all those cases over a longer time window. So instead of all the cases happening in 12 weeks, maybe we're stretching out to 20 weeks or 50 weeks or however long it takes. But it's, it's, it's what's working and I think it's what's going to continue to work. We don't have a vaccine yet. We're not going to have a vaccine for some time to come, most likely. Our choices are pretty limited.
Okay. So we've had two cases confirmed here in Delnart County. Is it a reasonable expectation to believe that that's going to continue in your opinion? I mean, I'm going to answer it myself. I don't think it is.
No, um, I think we will get, we will get more cases. I think they will, as long as everything is in place right now, I think they would tend to trickle in. At some point, as we start to lift some of the restrictions and, and try and modify the way businesses and the way people behave, uh, we're going to have more chance encounters that will transmit the virus. Or more likely we'll start having people bring the virus in from other areas where it's more active. And then we'll have more cases show up. I think what the goal needs to be, and I don't, I can't speak for all the other health officers around the country or around the state, but I think in the end, the goal needs to be finding that, that right balance of combination of things that we can do to limit the transmission, to make it a manageable disease and, and just keep it that way. And you know, it would be fine to have a few cases every week show up and be able to treat them as if they need to be treated in the hospital. But nothing to the degree that it pushes our hospital into a situation where they can't treat people. We don't want to go that far. So we want to find a, a nice balance point that we can manage the disease in a, you know, long-term, steady-state way, or it just, we can just manage it and take care of it.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not trying to be long-winded or, or whatnot, but I do have more questions.
I'll try and be shorter winded, I guess.
I, I, I know that you're a busy man and, and such. And I'm sure everybody's wanting your time right now with this going on. As far as the the transmission among young people and, and how it affects them. Looking at some of the other models from other countries like maybe Sweden or Great Britain at the beginning of this, when, when they started to see a lot of cases, they tended to have more of an open society, should I say? They encouraged those who were susceptible to the virus and most at risk to stay home. And they basically left the schools open. They told people to take, you know, precautions when they're out. Does that seem like the kind of model we are going to be looking at coming into the future here? Or what, what is your opinion on that?
I think it'll be something a little less permissive than that. I was kind of against closing the schools at the very beginning of this, but I think in retrospect, I've become more in favor of it. For several reasons. Number one, a large percentage of students have vulnerable elders in their homes. And allowing virus to kind of be rampant within the school system puts those people at risk. It also is kind of a risk for teachers. As it was set up at the time, they decided to close. There was, there wasn't really any good countermeasures in place. There wasn't any plan to figure out how to preserve the, the space between teachers and students in a meaningful way. I think we've moved quite a bit further along. I think the schools could consider a reopening plan, but I think what they're going to have to do for face-to-face instruction is going to have to be very different going forward. I think the general consensus in those countries was that they wanted to take a more uh, naturalistic approach, I guess, to allow the disease to progress through the portions of the population that were least likely to be affected. And I think in general, that's actually a good strategy. It's just that if you're not very careful with the measures you put in place to make sure it stays that way, you run the risk of having, well, I mean, Great Britain's had some significant problems with it. So it's, the theme is correct. It's just that the tools that you need to keep it on that track to keep the disease largely in the population that are going to do well with it. You gotta have those well thought out and in place to make it work.
Okay. Recently, uh, in any of your communications with, um, state officials, have they given any inkling as to when and what possible loosening of this stay at home order looks like?
They haven't given a precise date. I don't think anybody's there yet. They are working on the components of what they want to see in place before they change the order. They've got a lot of people working on that problem. Those problems, I should say, because it's a multi-problem effort. I think they're getting very close. I don't have a sense though, as to what day or what time. I think the governor will probably be making the announcement when it happens. And that's about all I know. They're, they're working really hard down there, but they've had so much other stuff to do at the same time. Everybody, everybody in public health is putting in overtime this, this spring and at every level. And actually then they've done a pretty amazing job keeping up with all the things they've been asked to do. So yeah, it's going to be soon. I just don't know when.
I guess I got one more. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. In your opinion, do you think that this should have been a statewide broad brush stroke? Kind of a shutdown or at least moving forward from now, do you think that for rural communities that maybe haven't seen as many cases, um, do you think the approach should be different? Or do you believe that we should all be like maybe Los Angeles County and shut everything down until this is over?
Uh, no, I don't think we should be like Los Angeles County. I don't think we can be equated to them. I think it would have been nice if there'd been some leeway afforded to us at the beginning. But you know, retrospection is always much clearer. So it's easy for me to say now. I do hope, and we were actually giving some feedback to the state, asking for a little bit more flexibility in rural counties as opposed to urban counties downstate. Because our experience has been very different, obviously. And we're in a very good position because we've had so little disease activity. We can relax things without really fear of stressing the system because the system hasn't been stressed at all yet. So we have a, a range of, of expectation that is much wider in terms of how many cases we can absorb and, and what kind of disease activity we can see. So I want a little more flexibility in relaxing things. Uh, I think the other local rural counties feel the same way. I've been in communication with a lot of the local health officers and our neighbors and we're all kind of in the same boat with this. We're just kind of very low level disease. We all have the same issues. We have, we're very dependent on tourism, for example, in this part of the state, especially this time of year and, and none of us are extremely prosperous as counties go compared to some other places in the, in the state. Yeah, we're feeling the pinch and we want a little more flexibility and a broader discretion to use. And I think we're going to get it. I just don't know how to describe it yet because we haven't seen it.
Okay. I just wanted to thank you for bearing with me. I, I really struggled with, um, your order to shut down the hotels and bed and breakfasts and things.
Yeah.
I understand why you did it. Anyway, I'll let you talk.
Well, I did too. I, but I felt at the time it was probably the best choice. That is one order that, you know, conceivably I have some flexibility with in advance of the state, but I'm hoping that the state gives us some, some direction here very soon and we won't have to start trying to parcel out bits and pieces of the governor's order. I don't think it would do any good. It would probably, if I started trying to relax things on my own without prior approval, so to speak, I think I would get us all into trouble.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Wright, anything for Dr. Raywell? No. Mayor Protem Kine?
Yes. So I, I'm just wondering, you talked about, um, if you get this later in life, if, if this exposure later in life, it'll be more detrimental. Um, because we've locked down our schools, our kids are less likely to be exposed and it would be a better thing for our children to be exposed and begin this sort of herd immunity. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, in, yeah, in the interim between now and getting a vaccine that everyone could access, that would be the best way. So closing the schools does shorten that by a few months, but in the broader scheme of things, you know, if you, if you get a, a cold virus or a coronavirus of any type somewhere in your, your youth, um, usually that's sufficient to start the process of having some immunity. And you know, the immunity is not necessarily lifelong. It's just that you usually do have some latent memory built into your immune system. So that if you get exposed later on, you'll get a cold again, but it, it's not going to set you back like it would if, if it was the very first time you get it in your 85, for example.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry. I have one more question. I know that this is going long. As far as testing goes, um, have we in our county been able to uh, figure out a way to get either antibody test kits so that we can start doing random testing possibly or and, and what's, what's the availability of test kits in general?
The, the biggest shortage right now is the appropriate swabs for, for testing. The second biggest shortage is the transport medium and the, and the vials. Antibody testing just recently started getting available under emergency use authorization from FDA. It's hard to come by because it's not ramped up. And it's not, um, it's not something you use necessarily clinically. It's more for documentation purposes and more for surveillance. So in other words, if you want to find out by random sampling, how, how many people in the county have been infected and recovered, that's what you would go to. It's kind of in its infancy. The, the best test is made by a company called Celnex. At least that's, that was the first one that came on the FDA approval list. But unfortunately it's designed to be used only in a certified lab like at a hospital. So it is kind of limiting for us. I'm, I'm still waiting to see how many point-of-care type testing, uh, kits become certified under emergency use. Uh, and granted, emergency use is not really certification. It's just that you've met certain criteria from the FDA that allows you to go forward and and start promoting your, your test. It was sort of like quasi-certification by the FDA. But the ideal one would be something that you could do in the office, uh, or even at home where you could just prick your finger and do a blood test and, and get an answer, you know, within 10 or 15 minutes. There are tests like that out there. It's just that the, the validity and the useful, the usefulness of some of them is not very well established. So we tend to be pretty conservative about new testing schemes in public health. And rightfully so. It's easy to get burned by, by buying a product that doesn't really help. So for those reasons, testing is still, it's still pre, pre reduced, much less than what we'd like it to be. And for most of us statewide, the, the biggest problem is just getting the the physical stuff we need to collect samples, namely the swabs and the, the transport medium.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Raywell, I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate your leadership in all of this. And I, I just have one, and I'm not asking for an extended, um, necessarily comment because I know that, I know that the Chamber of Commerce has reached out to you and I serve on the chamber board as well. But I just think for our public that's tuning in, maybe just a brief perspective on what's ahead for us as a community as it relates to big gatherings. Fourth of July is obviously a really important thing for our community. And, and I know that, that even Governor Newsom addressed some of these large gatherings as we look forward into June and July. Could you just comment really briefly on your perspective right now as we try to look at, at what's ahead for us for, from that standpoint?
Well, I'm hopeful that we can do some version of the Fourth of July celebration. I think it's going to have a different look and feel. If, you know, if the parameters are set up for us to, to make it possible to happen, it will not be like the past in some ways. But again, it's kind of, from my perspective, it kind of depends on whether a gathering that large is allowable under whatever guidelines were handed. If it is, then it's going to be something where we're going to encourage people to spread out, you know, social distance and, and follow the simple, personal stuff that we're talking about, you know, wear a mask in public and keep your space away from people. And, and you know, in that kind of situation is probably manageable. Because the, and that's the reason I wanted to bring this up with the letter today is from my perspective, I think the key things are what people are going to do themselves. It's not necessarily the physical environment, um, or whatever is handed down from, from the governor's office to us. What's going to matter is how good a job people are doing at keep themselves spaced out, spread out from each other, follow the social distancing rules. Good hand hygiene, wearing a mask when they're in public, just those basic things to reduce transmission. Cause this is all about reducing transmission. That's what it's all geared to do. You try and stop the virus from jumping from person to person. If you can accomplish that, the, the, the size of the environment that you're in is, becomes somewhat irrelevant as long as people are doing a good job. So I'm hopeful. I, I sure can't make any guarantees about the Fourth of July, but I would miss the Fourth of July terribly if we didn't have it. And, you know, I'm hopeful they're going to give us enough leeway to make it work.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Raywell. We appreciate your time and we look forward to engaging again as we see, um, see all this changing, uh, sometimes what feels like on a daily basis. Uh, so thank you so much, sir.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Weir, um, I'm not sure exactly where you want to go back to in regards to uh, where we were. Uh, Ms. Wynn did a wonderful job of laying out uh, the, the resources and how we're working towards helping businesses. I do know we have a couple of discussion items in, associated with our businesses. Where would you like to pick up, sir?
So yeah, I just kind of want to just, just recap on, on Holly's presentation. You know, she did a, she did a great job and, and you can really tell that she's the right person for this. You know, she, she cares about the businesses. The businesses, you know, are, are more than just a business to, to all of us. Uh, the UOC Task Force that, uh, that is working on economic resiliency, uh, is, is absolutely dynamite. And I think it really represents our community and coming together. With that, I do want to inform the council on some news that I, uh, that I received, uh, today, actually, from, uh, from Wild Rivers in regard to the Gillan and Hess Foundation. So they've realized the, the good work that we are doing and through Kevin Hartwick, who's been instrumental on that task force. So they have graciously donated uh, $10,000 to go towards this Economic Resiliency Fund to help uh, continue to fund the, the efforts of Claggett Wolf, uh, and Associates and, and Rob Holman. And, you know, they've just been, just been excellent. And for those of you that aren't familiar with the, the Gillan and Hess Fund, you know, there's a, there's a shot of their, of their website. Just a great foundation. They were instrumental in the loan program that we put together, providing the majority of the hundred and forty thousand dollars. They're funding the flag program. They're funding this in a time that really, we as a city, we, we really need and a community, we really need all the help we can get and, and to have a community like ours that's coming together in a time like this, I think is, is really powerful. So with that, and why it's so important that the city does receive some, some additional funding for that, I'd like to have Linda Lieber take the presentation at this point, give you a, a brief look at some of the impacts to the city because we're not immune to this either. And we rely on our businesses. We rely on T O T. We rely on sales tax for the majority of our general fund revenue. So to give you a look at that and then we'll be able to, to, to take on the discussion items with the deferral of T O T and the deferral of some business licenses or other, I guess, fees that are associated with business licenses and so on and so forth. Due to a request that's been made from a local business owner. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to, to Linda and she can run you through some of the numbers.
Okay. Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you. So I have, I'm hoping I can share my screen with you. Let me try this. Can you see that? The PowerPoint? Okay. Good. Okay. Okay. So I'm just going to run through in general terms, kind of what this is going to mean for the city's general fund. Obviously there's a lot that we don't know yet, but there are certainly some things that we need to be thinking about and preparing for. So first of all, just in general terms, sales tax and T O T. I just want to briefly go through how those are structured. Sales tax and transient occupancy tax, sometimes called hotel tax or bed tax. Those are taxes that are imposed by a government on the consumer or the guest. It is not, it is not an income tax on the business itself. The business collects the tax from the consumer or the guest and then passes it through to whichever government agency it needs to pass it through to. So in the case of sales tax, they, they pass that through to the state. And then the state disperses a percentage to local agencies such as the city. For T O T, the local hotel owners and Airbnb owners and, and all of those businesses collect the T O T tax from the guest and then pass it on to the city. Basically after each quarter. Sales tax makes up about twenty-five percent of our general fund revenues, so about a million and a half dollars per year. The state has issued, the governor has issued some executive orders in relation to sales tax. So businesses with less than a million dollars in tax can defer their first quarter payment for ninety days. So usually the sales tax that they collect in January, February and March, they remit by April thirtieth. But now they, as long as it's less than a million dollars in tax, they can remit July thirty-first instead. In addition to that, businesses can defer up to fifty thousand dollars in that sales tax. And begin paying it in, I believe it's in August and they can make twelve equal payments with no interest. So if a business qualifies for both of these, basically the sales tax that they have collected for January, February and March, they would not begin paying until August and they would pay equal payments for twelve months after that with no interest or penalties. Of course, that is going to directly impact the city because normally we would have received all of those tax revenues by the end of April. So the likely impact on the city, we are going to experience a, a loss in sales tax revenue regardless of these executive orders, just because there's just a general decline in consumer spending in relation to this emergency. In addition to that, some of the remittance is going to be delayed. And at this point, we don't know yet if there's going to be any federal or state direct assistance to small cities and counties to offset some of these lost revenues. T O T makes up another approximately twenty-four, twenty-five percent of general fund revenues. So with sales tax and T O T combined, we're, we're looking at basically three million dollars. Obviously, since the beginning of this emergency, there's been a drastic decline in travel. This is not just related to the county public health order related to short-term stays. There's just a general decline in travel all over the nation. I've seen some statistics that airline travel is down ninety-six percent from the comparable time last year. So impacts to the city, obviously there's going to be a, a significant loss in our T O T revenue just due to the fact that there's very little travel happening. Our January to March quarter, which normally would be remitted to the city by April thirtieth, our budget for that quarter is approximately two hundred thousand dollars. We expect it to be lower than budget, but not nothing because travel was still happening in January and February. The April to June quarter, we've budgeted approximately four hundred thousand dollars and we are anticipating it to come in low. But at this point, we don't yet know how low. A lot of it depends on partly when the local public health order might be lifted to allow short-term stays in our community. But even after that happens, it will take time for travel to go back to normal. And we don't know how long that's going to take. And then the July to September quarter is our biggest T O T quarter of the year paid in October. And that's usually six hundred thousand or more. So again, depending on how long this goes on, those revenues are going to be significantly impacted. We did receive a request from one local hotel owner. Initially, the request was to grant the January through June T O T to the hotel. In other words, just forgive it and not collect it at all. We received an updated request to defer the payment of the first three quarters of this calendar year, January through September, and not have any payments due until October thirty-first. Additionally, we've received a request to allow the hotel owner to keep three percent T O T to cover the, the hotel's costs for taking those as credit card payments. So when you, when you allow customers to pay by credit card, you generally pay a merchant fee that's a, some percentage of the total transaction. So we've had one, one hotel has requested us to allow them to deduct that cost from the T O T that they remit to the city. So the city attorney and I have both reached out to other cities in the state to find out what they are doing, if they've had any similar requests and, and how they're handling this. We are not aware of any cities that are granting or forgiving the T O T back to the hotel. There would be legal issues with that being a gift of public funds. Fifteen cities that we were able to get some information from, five of them are not allowing any deferral at all. One is stating that they're not technically deferring the due date, but they're not going to charge penalties or interest for ninety days. And then there are a handful that are allowing a deferral for varying time periods, anywhere from thirty days to sixty days or a hundred and twenty days or until the end of the local emergency. So the city's municipal code is what establishes the due dates and the penalties associated with T O T. So after discussion tonight, if the council wishes to change anything, we would need to do an ordinance update. And at this point, I would like to have some input from our city attorney about the requests and about what the process would need to be if the council decided to grant any of the requests.
So just to be clear, when I was looking at cities, I was specifically looking for cities that were actually did have some kind of T O T deferral program. So I didn't include in those numbers any, you know, the vast majority of cities that aren't doing anything with that right now. I was just looking at cities that were doing something. What was it that they were doing? And as Linda summarized, it's a, a variety of basically waiving penalties to extend that due date for some set period of time. Anything that we do in order to provide some sort of relief program during this period means to be something that applies equally to everyone in a similar situation. So we can't just say, okay, this business made a request, so we'll grant it. We need to have, it either applies to everybody or there's some kind of criteria which the applicant must meet. You know, for, for any, any type of program, whether regardless of exactly what it does, but the other issue with taxes is that they, you know, those are, as Linda mentioned, those are the property of the city already. So we would need to get those, receive those. And then if we wanted to do something specific with them, we could, but I think simply granting them back puts us in that realm of gifting public funds. I also want to point out that there's a, a difference, I think, sort of a fundamental different or fundamental difference in the way that we look at the tax itself and then waiving the penalties or interest. Since both of these, both T O T and also maybe to discuss later, business license taxes are set by ordinance as our, the penalties or the due dates will have to, if we want to do anything with them, we would need to adopt like a temporary urgency ordinance that would amend those requirements for, you know, whatever time period is determined to be necessary. I think that's about it.
Okay. So if it's okay, I'll go back to sharing my screen and, and we can run through a very similar discussion for business licenses. Oh, do you have a question?
I have a question for Martha. Martha, in our letter, it was requested from this, from this business owner about T O T, that the, the, in Brookings, they're waiving the three percent. Is that what I read?
I don't know anything about Brookings waiving three percent, but I do know that Oregon does not have the same language in their constitution about gifting public funds.
Okay. So what does Brookings do with their T O T? I mean, they, they, they have it. Yes?
Yes, there is T O T in Brookings. And what, what do you mean? What do they do with it?
Ours, our fifty percent of our general fund is, is T O T. So what, what does Brookings do with their T O T? I'm just curious. I know you're their attorney, so.
Well, I was. I'm not anymore, but they, the majority of it goes to the general fund. I couldn't say off the top of my head what percentage of that it is. And then like twenty, there's a smaller percentage that is dedicated to tourism promotion.
Okay.
I, I don't recall the numbers exactly.
I have a question. Is there wording in our state constitution or anywhere that requires a business to close or not accept tenants? Because I'm going to be honest, I think the government should take on some of this cost as well. And if that's us sacrificing some T O T so that these businesses can cover some of their costs to stay open, I think it's a small price to pay. Because we have in essence told this business that they cannot accept people as tenants.
Yeah. And, and in recognition, I mean, the city is also suffering from that decision because as for every room that's not rented, the city doesn't get the T O T. I mean, the T O T is only a percentage of those rooms that are rented. So there's a, you know, the city's going to suffer greatly from that order.
We're going to suffer even more if they go out of business and don't open again.
Okay. Linda, do you have anything else that you want to, to share with us before we open this up for discussion?
Um, yes. Just one note very briefly about the question about the credit card fees. Whether, you know, whether we could allow a business to deduct that from what they remit to the city. That's not a question that I've seen come up before. So if the council is interested in it, it's going to require some research. Just wanted to let you know that. And then I did have a little bit of information on the business licenses and then just sort of a general where the, where the general fund stands.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we take the T O T discussion and then come back to that if that's okay with you?
Oh, and Mayor, I just did also want to point out, I believe we did have, we, I believe we did receive a comment that wanted to be, someone wanted to write into the record regarding that.
Okay.
I believe that's the one that you guys were emailing today. Is it the hotel owner Linda that you're speaking about?
That's correct. I also believe that the hotel owner might be in the audience and so he raises his hand, might be able to give public, his own public comment.
He did, he did state that he was going to be present, but that he would like his comment read into the record.
Okay. So I, I, I'm not sure I saw an email today. But that's fine. Why don't we just, why don't we just do that? We'll go ahead and open up public comment right now. We'll have plenty of time for council discussion. So I'm going to open up public comment on this and I'm going to ask to begin with then if, if our clerk would read into the record what was given and then we will, then we'll go from there.
Mayor, Mr. Benu Mattel does have his hand up.
Oh, okay.
So we can be, maybe.
Love to hear from Benu, if Mr. Mattel, Mattel, if you would like to speak or if you want it read into the record. Either way, we're, we're glad that you're here with us this evening.
You should go ahead and constantly be, be, be a city manager. I think it will be better if you read the letter because it becomes very simple. And I know for sure Brookings do deduct charge card fees from the T O T. I have inquired this before. I used to, I tried to pay my T O T by charge card and city refused to accept that. And that is the fact. Brookings do allow to deduct the charge card fees. And the other thing is, I think council member Green, Grino was correct in saying that, you know, we are forced to close the hotel. And we, like I said, if you read my letter, it says everything in there. I've collected over seven million dollars in the last thirty-three years I've been in this town. And it has cost me over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in credit card fees alone. I am by the, by far the largest tax collector in this county. And the largest hotel owner in this county and been serving this county for thirty-three years. And I think And I think we need some help. Deferring is one thing. I don't want any forgiveness, but deferring is one thing. And the other thing I'm expecting is to give us a charge that fees back, you know, for the charge cards so that, you know, i- it's fair. It costs me ten thousand dollars a year now to collect the charge card, you know, to collect the taxes for the city. From the total that Linda mentioned, I think I'm almost paying one-fifth of the whole. T O T in this, in this city. And. Few years back, our city manager then, Paluso asked me to help the city and improve the motel and. Put some extra units and expand the, you know, restaurant, which we did. And the restaurant is not included in the taxes I've collected over the years. Restaurant is a separate tax. So seven million dollars I've collected is just for the T O T. And I think in this circumstances, uh, giving us a refund, Brookings does it, and that's for sure. And I can assure you and I can guarantee you that before they pay their, their D O T taxes, they deduct. The charge card fees.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Patel. Uh, why don't we go ahead and, um, Robin, if you would go ahead and read the Mr. Patel's uh, letter into the record. Um, I would appreciate that.
Very good. Grab it really quick. Alrighty. My name is Banu Patel and I am the owner of Best Western Plus Northwoods Inn, largest full-service hotel in the county. Until two thousand and one, I owned two motels in Crescent City. I have been the hotelier in our city for over thirty-three years and I have been the largest transparency occupancy tax collector by far. Over thirty-three years, I have collected and paid over seven million dollars in T O T costing me over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in credit card fees. Last year, T O T collection cost me approximately ten thousand dollars in credit card fees. This does not include sales tax collected in our restaurant. All our guests pay us by charge card and on average, each transaction costs us three percent in credit card fees. Some credit cards with promotion of mileage or rebate costs us even more. In two thousand and fourteen, our then-city manager, Mr. Palazzo, asked me to see if we increased hotel units and restaurant to help city get more funds. In two thousand and fifteen, I upgraded our property, including addition of three elevators and twelve luxury units. I completed construction of two-story restaurant in two thousand and seventeen, costing us over two point five million dollars. Every dollar was spent in the city. Our neighboring Brook, our neighboring city Brookings has seven percent T O T and we have ten percent. They allow the deduction of credit card fees from the collective T O T Crescent City does not allow deduction of credit card fees. I cannot pay T O T collected to city by my credit card as our city is avoiding the same fees we have been burdened with. Thank you for listening and hope the city council approves my humble request to waive T O T as presented in my letter. To mayor or allow us in the future to deduct three percent credit card fees like Brookings. And in addition, defer last quarters, January one through March thirty-first. And next two quarters, T O T payment until October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. It is no one's fault that we have to close motel. We are all in it together. We need your help.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment of those who are with us here? We have a, we only have four other attendees. Here, um, or, and, or did we receive anything else via email? Okay. I, I, I guess I just have one question that, that I'm not, I'm not clear on in regards to credit card fees. Um, and how? How the collection, most people who, who rent a motel room or hotel room or whatever are paying with a credit card. And so there would be credit card costs associated with every single transaction. That's not, that's not, that's not because of T O T. That's because most people pay with. Credit cards. It is just my thought and I, and, and maybe I'm missing something here, but I don't ever remember. Having somebody run my credit card for the room rate and then run the credit card separately for. The taxes. It's one transaction. Um, so I, I'm not sure. How the, the, the credit card charges factor into T O T. Um, I do understand the comment that, that Mr. Patel made regarding the fact that, that. That the city doesn't take the T O T payment via credit card. If, if that's correct, then that makes sense to me. But I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand how these credit card charges are directly associated with T O T. Is, is that something Linda that you can help me with?
Yes, so typically, um, when a merchant, so the, the hotel owner or even the city, when we accept credit card payments. You pay a fee to the credit card processor. And that's some combination typically of a flat fee per transaction plus. A percentage of whatever that total transaction was. So there could be an argument made that the total transaction of that hotel guest includes both the room and the T O T. So the percentage rate that the merchant, the hotel owner is paying for that credit card transaction includes some portion of fee. That is because of the T O T, because the total amount is higher and it's a percentage of the total amount.
Okay, so then in that case, uh, just because I, I have to do round numbers. If this hotel room was a hundred dollars. And ten percent of that, so ten dollars, so it would only be the percent, it wouldn't be three percent of the T O T. It would be a percentage of that, it would be on that ten dollars only that, that, that there is a, that this is costing them, right? Is that?
Yes, but one of the things that makes it very complicated is that every single credit card issuer and every single type of credit card that they issue charges a different. Rate structure. So it could be one and a half percent if you have, say, one particular card, but if you have a different card that's maybe issued by the same company. But it has a different fee structure, maybe because it gives you mileage points or something, it might be a different percent.
But even if, even if we were talking about, even if we just chose an average number based on what those are, it would, we, we don't, we wouldn't be talking about. Three percent on the entitled tired cost of the room. Let's just say we chose three percent. It would be in this, in my scenario, it would be three percent on that ten dollar T O T. Not on the entire cost. Is that, am I, am I correct there?
That would be my understanding, yes.
Okay, I, I'm just trying to understand the, how, how this factors in with that, that piece. It's not the total cost. Of, of, of T O T. It would only be then a portion of, of that.
Right, I, I, the way I understand the request is that by increasing the total amount of that. Transaction for, in your example, it is a hundred and ten dollars instead of a hundred dollars. So if the merchant is paying, say, on average, three percent of the total as a credit card fee. Then three percent of the ten dollars is a fee that's directly related to T O T. That's my understanding of, of the request.
Okay, which is, which is significantly different than just taking three percent out of the T O T. I mean, that's a much smaller number than just in essence saying you only have to remit seven percent.
Right, and my understanding would be they would still remit ninety-seven percent of their T O T. And the three percent would be in, is to cover the, the credit card fees.
Okay, I, I, they just, it, it just, that's much different than just comparing ten percent and seven percent. The, the, that, that would not be the same number. So.
No, I, I believe the seven percent he was referring to, I, I believe he said that Brookings T O T rate is seven percent. Whereas Crescent Cities is ten percent. I believe that's what he said.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Ware, I, I see that Mr. Patel has got his hand up. Could, could you unmute him so that he can respond, please?
Be my pleasure. Mr. Patel, you should be, have an open mic.
Okay, thank you for bringing me in again. Uh, yes, that is absolutely right. It's seven percent is the T O T that Brookings collects. So for example, if the room rate is a hundred dollar, they will get seven dollars. Right? Over here, if we collect a hundred dollars for the room, it's going to cost ten dollars, right? Now, the three percent what I'm talking about is on ten dollars. For Crescent City, right? And for Brookings, they are giving away back three percent from the seven dollars they collect. So if my T O T bill is, say, three hundred thousand dollars a year, it costs me ten thousand dollars to collect the T O T. And that's the clarification, okay?
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, Linda, anything else that you wanted to say in regards to T O T before I, uh, open it back up to the council?
Um, no, I, I think mostly just, um, what Martha was talking about there. If, if the council wishes to take action on this, we do need to address the issue of the gift of public funds. Uh, depending on, of course, what, what action is decided upon. Um, because again, the T O T that was collected from the guest, that's actually a tax that the guest paid to the city. Not that the hotel is actually paying as an expense.
Okay, thank you. All right, council members, um, I will open up and give you an opportunity to weigh in. On, on this, um, if you have anything.
Uh, for me, I'll just say, you know, I really appreciate, um, Director Leva and City Liver and City Attorney Rice making it clear that. T O T is not something that a hotel pays. It's what the consumer pays. So I mean, with that in mind. Uh, I'm comfortable with deferring payments for a time being to make it easier on our hotel owners to get their ducks in a row and process the paperwork. But ultimately, that's not a tax that Mr. Patel is paying to the city. That's a tax that. Mr. Patel's guests and other hotels owners' guests are paying to the city. And I think that for me, that's the key distinction here that, um, needs to be made. And that's what makes me comfortable with the decision that I'd like to make, which is a temporary deferment.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmember Wright, anything that you'd like to weigh in on? Okay, Councilmember Grino?
Well, I mean, why are we requiring him to take on that extra cost to give us the tax, taxes? But that doesn't make any sense to me.
We didn't, we don't.
The credit card processing fees, you mean?
Right, I mean, it's a cost of doing business.
So the, um.
And if he's, if he's using that, those funds, or if he's using those, that if it was, if the number was correct, ten thousand dollars. It doesn't seem right that, that he's having to do that to give us the taxes.
Yeah, so I initially misunderstood his request about the three percent, but, um. If we, I, it would be permissible to allow hotel owners that, um. You know, rebate or whatever you wanted to call it, if you wanted to include that in the future. Going forward, because like you said, that is a fee. Associated with, with processing the payment. So if the city chose to share that burden. Um, and include that in the ordinance, then it would be permissible to do so.
But that is a, just an observation and I, and I'm not saying I'm, I, I'm not, um. Willing to consider that, but that is a cost of doing business with a credit card. That's not something we set. That's something that credit card companies set. They say if you're going to use this service and, 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 and many places have had to go, because credit card companies seem to have such a. Uh, a diversity of, of, of what their fees are to use that. Many places will tell you, if you use a credit card, you're going to pay more because it costs me more to process this. That's what. Retailers, uh, not just hotelers, but retailers are doing because there's such a variance in what, what credit card processing charges are. We don't set that. We don't have any control over that. That's what credit card companies are doing. And that is part of the cost of doing business. Um, we don't have any control over, over that whatsoever. We're not forcing that upon a, 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 any local business that says you've got to take credit cards. Um, I, I can guarantee you, the state is not going to waive credit card fees. And say, well, if you're collecting sales tax on this, you don't have to pay a portion of that. You're gonna, the state's gonna mandate you remit every single penny of that sales tax. So I, I, I think we have to realize that this is something that the credit card companies are controlling as far as what those costs are. Doesn't have anything to do with us. We don't set that whatsoever. So, uh, Heidi?
I understand that, but. Out of one side, we're saying this is the cost of doing business, which I, in my own business. If someone's insurance company is paying for their, the, the reimbursement that I'm getting. Sometimes these sneaky guys send me a virtual credit card. Which I then have to pay two or three percent like Mr. Patel is saying. And that's two or three percent less reimbursement than I should be getting.
Right.
But that is the cost of doing business. We're saying that out of one side of our mouth, but then if Mr. Patel wants to pay his T O T. We are not going to accept his credit card. So it's either the cost of doing business or it's not.
Well, I, I, I agree, I agree with you and there, there are, there are. Our businesses that, that have stopped taking credit cards or certain credit cards for this very reason. And, and I, it, it, it is, it is certainly frustrating. I do think that, that, um. I think that it is a, your, your observation is, is, is on point, Heidi. I think if, if, if we're, at the very least. We need to reevaluate our willingness to accept payment in the same way that businesses are having to, are. Accepting payment. Um, I think that's a fair, a fair thing for us to be considering.
It's certainly worthy of discussion. I, I can't, we, we obviously, we can't. Make any decisions tonight. We can't make any decisions in two weeks, but. I think it's a fair discussion to be had. Um, I am absolutely in favor of allowing Mr. Patel. And any others that are in need of deferring, um, the ability to defer. I, I don't. I don't have. An opinion on how long that deferral is, um, that, that would be a Linda question. Um, sorry, Linda, to throw you under the bus there, but, um. We have to pay police officers and we have to run a fire department and, you know, fifty percent of our general fund. Comes from those T O T payments and we can't cut those services to the community. So. I, I don't, I don't claim to have the answer for that, but I am in, I would be in favor of doing a deferral, but I would defer. To Linda as to how long that deferral can be.
Just a, just a clarification, Heidi. The, the T O T is about twenty-five percent. It's fifty percent if you go T O T and the sales tax together.
That, that's true. I'm sorry. Thank you.
So I, 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 I am absolutely in favor of, of, of trying to, and I'm gonna have to defer to Linda and staff to do this. But I think that we need to put together a deferral plan, um, that would allow for. Uh, uh, quarters three and four of the nineteen twenty, um, fiscal year to be deferred. I, I think that, that, um. I, I don't know what's going to happen with, with the first quarter of nineteen, of twenty twenty. I I don't know what's going to happen with with the first quarter of nineteen of twenty twenty one. Gosh, I'm really hoping that we see things open back up and people are traveling and our people are here beginning in July, but we don't know that. But I think that that at least on an initial basis, I would like to see us put together a plan to provide an opportunity for. For a deferral of the third and fourth quarters. And that certainly that would not that the payments would not begin until after the first quarter. Of the twenty 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 one. Because that is the that's the largest opportunity that our hotelers have to to generate revenue. Is that July, July, August, September timeframe? We don't know that that's going to happen. So at least on an initial basis, I wouldn't want any repayment. To take a to take place until after October first of of this year. That may still be too soon. I would ask that staff reach out to Mr. Patel and others to get their feelings on this. It may be that that we need to move that to January one of twenty twenty one. The 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 second, I've got several things because I've had some time to think about this deferral. I I think that we need to have a clear payment plan established for how that money. Is paid that's deferred. So that there's a clear understanding for the business owner that once I start making payments, there's got to be this regular payment. Of of what has been deferred is 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 coming in. That will give us at least an opportunity to do some budget projections of it's going to come in differently and it's going to come in. Slower, but it's coming in at a later date so that we can prepare for for that. The other the other two conditions that I would ask for is that. That this deferral is is contingent upon them remaining current. With their P O T moving forward in in quarter one. That 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 they've got to stay current during the that first quarter of the twenty 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 one basis. And then my final thing, and then I'll stop. My final thing is is that whenever we establish the the repayment plan of that which is deferred. That they have to maintain, they have to stay current on whatever that payment structure is. Or the entire back amount becomes payable in full if they don't stay current with whatever they agree to. And so if they if they come and say, well, we can start making payments, you know, October first for the last third and fourth quarter of nineteen twenty. And we can make that payment over a six month time and they agree to that. Then they need to stay on with that unless there's some kind of hardship that they come and. Just like we would anybody else, but we we need some. We really need to lay this out as a as a solid thought out plan that we we do to give them that opportunity. But also looking at the accountability that we have to our to our taxpayers in general. And our constituents to take care of these these public funds. So Heidi, I'm sorry, I I I had to get all this out of my head at once so that I I didn't miss it, so.
No, I get it. I mean, earlier when Martha was talking and Linda was talking, I was like texting myself notes in my. In my phone so that I could recall that. And that's exactly where I was going was that if they did have this. Twelve, you know, equal payments or or whatever, they needed to be concurrent what with what? That quarter that they would be normally paying that hadn't been deferred. So they'd have they'd have to be paid, you know, together at the same time. And so. That would that would be a bit of a challenge, you know, if if we don't have a great summer or, you know, a good fall. So I would I I wouldn't want to burden. A business owner to the point that they wouldn't be able to make those payments because. Then they'd be out of business and then that would just the the domino effect of that would just be tremendous.
Yeah. Mr. Greenow?
I just wanted to make sure that we included everyone who is affected by the shutdown order. Bed and breakfast, RV parks, hotels, the whole gambit.
Yeah, it has to be.
It needs to be fair.
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely. Mr. Ware, you look like you're leaning into the camera, sir.
Yeah, no, you definitely definitely had my my attention and I think I have have good direction, just clarification from Martha. So. So T O T and late fees and whatnot being set by ordinance, this would have to come back before the council. Really, what, before April thirtieth, before this is due with an emergency ordinance? Would that be a recommendation?
Yes.
So so we have that. So we do need some pretty clear direction tonight in order to craft something that can come back before the council. So what what I'm hearing? And just let's recap this. So they need to have financial need. I heard I heard Mayor Pro Tim Kine say that. So there have to be some demonstration that, you know, they need this deferral. The the deferral would be the the last two quarters in this fiscal year, so January through June, basically. Their payments repayment could start October first. So after that, the basically the the first quarter next fiscal year. And the repayment plan, we're looking at possibly equal payments over a twelve month period. They need to remain current on all T O T after July first. So the current T O T and then they must stay current on the on the deferral payments.
Yes.
Now, we just talked about the Fourth of July. And now we're saying the First of July, because we're on the quarters here. So. We may need to revisit this sometime in in a June meeting.
That's true. I absolutely agree.
We're not open for business. How can we expect someone to commit to this deferral and twelve month equal payment? That that's not realistic.
Well, the July, August, September taxes, I don't think are due until October thirty first.
I know, but if they're not open for business, they wouldn't.
But I'm just saying, we would have time before October thirty first to take some further action when whenever they are open.
Okay, so if they're not open, you know, let's say sometime in May, fingers crossed. How would they be able to meet the the deadline that's due July first?
That's deferred until October.
And yeah, and as they're going forward, say for the months of July, August, September, then they're only going to pay the T O T that they collect. So if they're not collecting anything, then they wouldn't they wouldn't necessarily owe anything on that. But during that time, like you're saying, during that time, we would then have to look at when that repayment schedule should actually start because they haven't made any money in order to to pay anything that was deferred.
Our next timeframe will be the will be the end of August. Because that's when the money would come in again for not the end of. When it would end of July, I'm sorry, July thirty first would be when when this quarter would have been. But since we're already deferring that, it would be at the end of that September. So it would be the end of October. Is when we would be talking about our next next period where we would be expecting them to remit anything. Which, as Martha says, we'll have plenty of time. If 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 the order has not been lifted by July. Then we may want to revisit this, Heidi, I I think, and simply say that we may we may defer again. Because there's not even any money coming in anyway. It may not be necessary. So but.
I I'm open. I'm open to that.
I just had a question of clarification on clarification of the proof of need. What does that look like? Finding a proof of financial need for this.
Well, and that's something that.
That seems pretty broad and.
Yeah, I think I think in this case. I think that by way of adopting the urgency ordinance to defer payments. I think the city council would be making that finding already, basically that there there is a financial need. And this is something that would apply across the board because it's it's being done by ordinance. So it's a. A deferral and payment program upon anybody that wants to take advantage of it would be my suggestion.
Okay, makes sense to me. Okay, Mr. Ware, Ms. Libra, you feel like you guys have have a clear. Clear enough direction to put something together for our consideration?
I think so. I just had one, just to clarify one thing, you want the payment plan to have no interest and no penalties? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, seen thumbs up on that one. The other thing, just while we're on this discussion, this will have to be something that does come back at a much later time, not a not at a not at a special meeting, but. To look at credit card and that that whole subject. So that back to the council, once we do the research, because there's a lot of nuances on that one.
Yeah, I would very much appreciate looking at that. It just feels like if we're going to use, as Heidi pointed out, if we're going to say this is the cost of doing business. Then we need to share the cost of doing business with business here in our community. I just just makes sense to me. I was not a piece that I was aware of that that we didn't accept. That in form of a credit card payment. So, yeah, we need to bring that back.
Yep, I think that's a valid point and we'll have some financial obviously impacts, but definitely a valid point.
Okay, so are we are you going to shoot for a week from tonight? Is that your goal, Mr. Ware?
Would be my goal. Does that work for the council? Linda, Martha, do you think we can pull something together in that timeframe? Nod from Martha, Linda, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Councilwoman Wright, does that work for you as well?
Okay, next Monday. Okay.
So there's a.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ware, the well, the other discussion that we had was in regards to the percentage of the of the T O T. As that relates to the credit card fees and and honestly, because I didn't understand really what was being asked. I I'm not sure that 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 I'm I'm prepared to to take any action on that tonight, but I would certainly like. I'd like some research done by staff to give us an idea. What does that look like? What would that? What 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 how much less T O T would we be receiving if we chose a number, if it's three percent? I I just like to try to make that decision without having any data in front of us. Doesn't seem like that that's a good decision to try to make tonight. Maybe there's some. You can give us some communication on that by next week. Maybe it's something that we that we look at at a at a deeper level by the time we get to to May fourth. But I just feel like we need more data on that to to really make an informed decision.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so if the council's all right with it, that is something we do a little bit more research on. I think we do have direction from the council to to bring something back. And like you said, May fourth, maybe it's, you know, we need a little bit more time, maybe it even gets rolled in as part of this next budget.
Okay, I just don't. This is not a. With all the good work that we're doing to support businesses, this is not a back burner thing. This needs to be something that we are really looking at. So I don't want it to get lost in, especially given the fact that we're doing these virtual meetings and it's already awkward. I don't want us to lose sight of this. Because if the message that we want to give is is the message that Ms. Wend gave tonight is that we are we are doing the best that we can. To serve our local businesses, then let's make sure that we continue with that. And this is one that's been brought to our attention that that at least we need to have good information to evaluate. And and weigh in on as policymakers.
Absolutely. And I do see Mr. Patel has his hand up.
Okay, one last time, Mr. Patel, before we move on, sir.
Well, I just wanted to thank you all for considering this because I let you know that, you know, we have still got all our employees on the payroll. And we have not laid off anybody, those who voluntarily resigned not to work in this, of course, here they decided. But we still carry on all these people. And again, the other thing is that right now we are open and we have only ten percent or less than ten percent of people, see? Because we're just accepting the essential workers, whereas the others might be. And so there's another point that I wanted to bring that, you know, we are not enforcing this upon everybody. So we I see a lot of bed and breakfast and everybody, you know, having people from outside that might create a problem for us in early opening. So I think there should be some enforcement, but our we have a total disinfectant way of cleaning our rooms. We have ultraviolet warrants that we run around the hotel and we have a very. A policy of having one person behind the desk with the screen. And we rest our rooms for three days before we rent them again, just like Dr. told that there should be a resting period. So we don't rent the same room before three days in this environment. So once again, thank you very much for consideration of this. And I will accept whatever you say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. We very much appreciate you working with us and helping us address these concerns. Okay, I guess the last piece is the this business license renewal piece and. Because we have not had any requests for this. My recommendation would be that staff continues to look at this and bring this back to us. And on April four, May fourth, I don't feel that there's an urgency for us to weigh in on this right now. I think that the other piece is a lot more important for for our staff time to be given. If we'd had some requests, then I I guess I would say, let's get into this. But since we don't have any. Let's work on the other piece and then and then and then take this afterwards. I don't know what staff's thoughts on that are, but that's just my perspective right now.
When are those supposed to be updated?
The business licenses, what are renewals are due July first, you said, Linda, but they start receiving the request beginning of June, is that right or in May?
Yeah, we we mail out the renewals at the end of May to give them thirty days, but they're due July first.
So, yeah, so we can certainly, you know, bring it back for for another discussion to the council as we get closer to that. But our our anticipation is that as those notices do get mailed out, we we might receive some of those requests.
Well, let's push this to May fourth. Let's get the T O T piece put together, the deferral piece, and then. And then maybe maybe we need to do some outreach. Maybe Ms. Wend can weigh in on this in some of the impact in stuff we've gotten from the economic impact. Injury surveys, if there's a sense that this would be something that would that would. Be of a benefit and then we can talk about it more on May fourth.
Sounds sounds good to me. We have consensus from the council.
We good with that? Okay.
Let's remind every let's remind everyone that veterans get their city business licenses waived.
There you go. Okay, is there anything else within this this piece, Mr. Ware, that you wanted us to weigh in on tonight? Or you feel like you've gotten clear enough direction to address the things that need to be addressed tonight?
And I think we have. I think we have clear direction. I mean, obviously, you know, these things and we've discussed it. Don't come without their financial impact to the to the city as well. And so I think, you know, when we come back to the council, our special meeting will also be able to present the council a little bit of of the financial picture of the city. And then there'll be a lot more on on May fourth. COVID nineteen is definitely taking its toll on 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 us and. COVID-19 is definitely taking its toll on, on, on us. And as we project forward, there are, you know, there are gonna be tough decisions for us as a city. I don't think there's, there's any, uh, any way around it un- unfortunately. Uh, and so we'll just have to try to, uh, be upfront and try to get the information out. Try to make the assumptions that are there and then hopefully, uh, take action early as Ms. Lieber and I were discussing, uh, earlier. Uh, as that will have the greatest long-term impact because this doesn't look like this is gonna be any, uh, short-term revenue loss for us. We're gonna see impacts of this, uh, going out, uh, into the, into the future for the next couple of years probably. And so making sure that, that we manage our money wisely. We invest in the things that we need to invest in and then we understand the, uh, the full impact. So we can keep offering as many of the services as we possibly can, especially with police fire and other general fund type expenses.
Okay. Thank you. With that then, we are, uh, we are at the end of, we covered.
Mayor and score, I believe, uh, Councilman Greeno had, uh, wanted to weigh in on that.
Yes.
I, I didn't want to weigh in on that, but, um, I can wait until we report out and ask my question then.
All righty. That's, that's where we are then. Uh, Mr. Ware, anything else that you wanted to share before we turn it to the council?
The, uh, the only thing and we'll, uh, we can, another late meeting, so we'll save a lot of our project updates, but Front Street is going to break ground later on this week. I believe the contractor is gonna break ground on Thursday. And so we'll be looking at a, at a groundbreaking ceremony with, with social distancing and just to let everybody know that'll be, I think we're talking Wednesday, possibly at four o'clock. Although I looked at the weather and the weather is not great, so I might, uh, might try to communicate with the council, see if there's a time, maybe tomorrow, we could even do it. We'll do a Facebook live. We can get the, the, the public there and really kick off, uh, what's gonna be a, a great project and one that's been highly anticipated.
So if you're doing a, if we're doing a groundbreaking, does, does, does that mean that there's, there's a possibility the mayor might be able to get into a backhoe? I don't want, just wanna, I, I, I wasn't really thinking shovel. I was thinking big scoop.
I think our, uh, our, uh, our insurance carrier might have, uh, might have something to say.
So it's okay to stick you in a dog bite suit, but mayor can't use a backhoe. All right, just saying. All right. Very good. Let us, let us know. All right. Let's go around the room or around the room, around the screen quickly. Uh, Mr. Greenow?
Uh, I, I don't have anything to say except, um, I, I would really like to see Dr. Ray Walt come back, uh, at each one of our, uh, meetings going forward, just to keep us updated. I understand you guys are doing updates on a regular basis, um, through the county, but I, I'd really like to see him come back so that if we do have any questions through this process, that we could get them answered for, for the people of the city.
All right. We can certainly reach out to Dr. Ray Walt and find out his availability, uh, going forward. Good idea. Mr. Follman?
Nothing to add.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Wright?
I just wanted to echo what, uh, Councilmember Greeno said. I was gonna stay hearing his voice and on, on like a radio ad, just felt it, I don't know, more comforting and somehow, I don't know if that makes sense to anybody else, but I, I, it was very informative for me personally.
I would agree with that. And having done some, um, some press conference type things, you know, live, there is something about having Dr. Ray Walt there speaking to these issues that, that is, I mean, I read all of his briefings as well. But there is something about just listening to somebody address these things that I think has some, some real value to us and to our community to hear him speak as well. So I think those are very good observations and, and a good idea.
Yeah, thank.
Uh, Pro Tim Kine?
I just wanna say, um, I really appreciate every day being able to look at the, um, public health page and the COVID updates. And I like that there's now, um, a listing that says recoveries to confirm two recoveries. And it is no coincidence that the day that that was listed, we had patients that had a shift in their comfort. They, they still wear their masks. They still want, you know, to make sure that their hands are washed and, and all of those things, but they, they have a genuine feeling of a light at the end of the tunnel. And that, that's great. Um, I wish that they would update the, um, the COVID, um, update a little more often. I would request that it's done over the weekend because it's a little, you know, disheartening. Sometimes you don't know what's happened over the weekend. And you're looking at it on Sunday night and it says, last updated Friday, 5:15. Well, what happened on Saturday? What happened on Sunday? You know, how many more tests were done? Um, and I, I know that people are watching that in real time.
Yeah. I think that I, I, I'm with you there. I'm with all of you in that. I think that, that communication in the midst of this is, is more important than probably anything else. That's why, you know, I, I've tried to do some of those things. This was, this would be the first week that I have, this last week was the first week that I didn't do some kind of, uh, uh, video or something. And I think we need to keep in front of the community. We need to keep pushing them to that website, read the updates. We need to, you know, that's why I, I, that I asked Dr. Ray Walt to join us tonight. We need, we need that. Our community needs that. And, and, uh, and so I, I think that those are all very, very keen ideas. Uh, I will just, um, share and then we'll be done for the night. Uh, I did reach out personally to Congressman Huffman this morning. And, um, and he assured me that he is working, um, towards, um, trying to address the fact that, that, you know, small cities, cities like us don't have direct access and that that is a, that is certainly a debate going on right now. So I know Mr. Ware asked us to send letters, emails and this and that. I, I just picked up the phone. So, um, I don't do that very often with our elected, uh, the, with our representatives to take it, you know, I don't use that very often where I'll make that phone call or text or whatever, but, uh, I do believe that he, he does know the importance of local cities having access to those that aid. So anyway, with that, um, it was, yeah, it's amazing how bringing, picking up a little one, Isaiah will put a smile on all of our face, which, uh, is a necessary, um, thing. And in the midst of all of this, uh, we need something to smile about. So.
Yeah. Usually she loves being on meetings like this. I do them all the time, my, my classroom meetings, but there was a bottle behind me. So she was not having this right now.
I didn't want to interrupt you. Yes, well.
So, yeah.
You may not be the only person that that, that, uh, has that feeling. So. All right. Well, with that in mind, then I'm going to adjourn our meeting. Um, Mr. Ware, send out an invite for, uh, for next Monday. And, uh, for the public who've joined us, thank you for bearing with us. Uh, we are doing our very best to, to serve you in these uncertain and somewhat crazy times. So with that, good night, everyone.